Good evening. Thank you for being at and for viewing the June 7th special budget meeting of the City Council. And the City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. If you wish to make a comment during the public comment period, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, we'll have you line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged on to Zoom, you'll click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak. And if you're on the phone, press *9 and that will raise your hand. And when it's your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. Please note that this is a special meeting, so there's no early oral communication or an opportunity to make comments that are on items that are not on the agenda. So there will be only one portion of the meeting that will be for public comment, and that'll be for all items related to the budget. So we'll start the meeting with a budget overview from our City Manager and Finance Director.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Councilmember, members of the public. And Andrea Starhevsky is available via Zoom tonight just based on our timing. So I'm going to let her go ahead and pull up her overview presentation. But while she does that, just kind of open with, we are excited to actually bring you a balanced budget this year. It took a lot of hard work from our Finance Director and from all of the departments to bring things in line. We consider this a real transitional budget, you know, as we come out of the pandemic. You will see as we go through, we are restoring almost all services to pre-pandemic levels. We do still have two and an over-hire position that are not funded in this budget, one in police and one in recreation and an over-hire in police. But we have continued within the Police Department to talk about when we get up to full staffing with the current vacancies, that we will revisit that and have a discussion with the Council at that time. But other than that, we are restored to pre-pandemic levels. We will go into this in detail, but we are using some amounts or suggesting that the Council use some amounts of our American Rescue Plan Act dollars for one-time projects this year. And to use some of the contingency set aside that the Council set aside, I'll say, a year and a half ago for the cost of living increases that we afforded in our three-year MOU with our employee groups. So at the time that we approved those MOUs, we set aside money to be able to fund those for that three-year period. We did not need to tap into that in the current fiscal year that we are in, but we have budgeted a portion of that in the fiscal year that you'll be entering into. Besides those two items, we really are producing a balanced budget within our revenues and expenditures. We have a lot of really exciting projects that are in the budget that are funded this year. Many of those are the heavy lift that staff has been doing behind the scenes during the pandemic to ready those projects for construction, and we will talk through those as we go. But at a quick higher level, we'll go ahead and let our Finance Director start with that overview, and then we'll get into individual departments. Andrea?
Just making sure that you can hear me.
We can.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers and members of the public. Tonight, I will be walking through our first portion of our budget overview for our fiscal year 2223 budget study session. So to start off, just going over the budget overview, and then I will hand this back off to our department to walk through their individual budget. High-level items I'll be touching upon include structure overview, budgeted revenues to include our citywide funds and general fund. That will include some comparison tables and graph depictions, and then also our budgeted expenditures for citywide funds and general fund. And once again, various ending off with our general fund reserves. There will also be a time to talk about some budget highlight and then our American Rescue Plan Act funds. So as far as principles, we strive to present a balanced budget, meaning that revenues and expenditures are balanced in each budget cycle. We want to ensure that there are adequate reserves, that we are using probable and conservative estimates, that we take into consideration the importance of human capital as our staff are integral to city operations, and that we ensure core service delivery of our various services and operations here at the city. So as far as fund overview, just high level, you'll see throughout your budget packet, here at the city, we have a fund accounting structure. Each fund series relates to different descriptions or classifications for our funds. The 100 Fund Series or Fund 101 relates to our general fund, named after namesake. It is used for general operation. It derives revenue from various fees, licenses, and permits, taxes, and some special revenues, such as grant funds. Our special revenue funds, which will be highlighted tonight, one example being our American Rescue Plan Act Fund typically has restricted use for the revenues received, and those revenues are received from state, local, or other resources. We'll also talk about several of our enterprise funds. Those funds derive revenues from various user fees and are to cover operational costs and capital costs of those funds, examples being our water service fund, our water fund, and our wastewater fund. And then also our internal service fund, such as Central Garage and our Information Technology Fund, which don't derive revenues from user fees, but instead charge out their various expenditures to fund citywide. And then as you'll note, within the budget packet, we also have just a really quick example of what a typical general ledger expense line looks like and what that's comprised of. The first three digits relate to the fund number, the second two digits relate to the department number, and then the next two digits relate to the activity number. The various ways we have the agenda set up for tonight, we have light-kind activities grouped together, and then the last five digits relate to the particular type of expense that is being stated on that general ledger line. So moving into revenues and our master fee schedule, so within the printed packet for tonight's study session, our master fee schedule is in a track changes version on printed packet page 123, or the previous binders for the study session, pre-printed page numbers of 111. Just highlighting some of the major changes included in the master fee schedule, starting with our Consumer Price Index, we are including an increase of 4.7%, and that is to pass on operational costs that the city is incurring onto the end consumer. We have included these increases for any fees that are applicable. We also wanted to note that we are going into year three of our five-year rate study increase for water and wastewater service charges. For water, that's going to be a 1.5% increase. For wastewater, that's going to be a 10% increase. And as a reminder, these fee increases are to cover operational costs for both the water fund and wastewater fund, future capital project costs, and potential debt service costs as well. We're also including an increased fee for our short-term rental permits. And currently, the fee for the initial application is $50. We're proposing an increase to $150, and our current renewal fee is $20. We're proposing an increase to $100 for renewal. This is to help cover the costs for staff to process these various permit applications, the initial application and the renewal. So starting off with citywide revenue, I have a graph just to show some of the high-level changes and outliers. This includes our 2023 proposed budget revenue for different categories compared to our current 2022 budget, and then also a snapshot of where we landed in fiscal year 2021 for actuals. The outlier here is our intergovernmental revenue, and on the next slide, I will break down some of the drivers that are causing that intergovernmental revenue category to kick upwards of $30 million in the next fiscal year. So the changes I will highlight throughout the presentation related to both our city revenues and city expenditures, I'm only highlighting changes that are greater than 450, about 500,000. And I did want to point out that the way the presentation is broken down, it listed, I'm listing out various classification categories just to give a snapshot of different groupings on both our revenues and expenditures to show any major fluctuations that are happening between our proposed fiscal year 2023 budget and our past 2022 budget. So as I mentioned, the intergovernmental revenue category, it is named after namesake. These are funds that are received from federal, state, or other agencies. And as you can see on the chart, we're estimating a little over 32 million, 32.6 million in the next fiscal year compared to 15.7 million in the previous fiscal year, the difference of about 16.8 million. And the three major drivers for this include our wastewater treatment plant, Phase 1 construction, and we're applying for a state revolving loan, which could turn into grant funding if we are approved for our application. So these, either grant planning or state revolving loan, these are both considered reimbursement funds, and that is to the tune of 11.5 million as part of the driver for the 16.8 million dollar change. We are also applying to the State Water Resources Control Board for our steel waterline project, similar to the wastewater treatment plant. This would be deemed as reimbursement funds of $2.5 million. And then we also have our American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, which is considered intergovernmental revenue for about $2.4 million increase compared to the prior fiscal year. I also wanted to point out the change for the Charges for Services category, where we're at about 13.1 million in this 2023 proposed budget versus last year at 14 million, the decrease of about $991,000. $200,000 of that is related to our water service revenue. We're expecting that to remain relatively flat compared to our current year, where we're estimating about $5.2 million in water service revenue. In 2022, we currently have 5.4 budgeted, so hence a $200,000 decrease on water service revenue. We also have decreases on wastewater revenue. A portion of that consists of connection fee decreases budgeted compared to last year of $160,000. We will also have our sewer repair fee, which is a $5 fee that is currently charged on our utility bills. That will come off of our customers' bills starting in December of 2022 because we are, we will be paying down the debt service related to that as that will mature in December. That is also another $200,000 decrease in revenues compared to prior fiscal year. The remainder is related to wastewater service charges, and we're looking at a current budget of about $800,000 decrease on wastewater. After reviewing the budget packet and coming up with analysis figures, I will, I'm reporting out to Council that we will revise the wastewater service revenues upward as we are on track to hit about $6.7 million in revenues in fiscal year 2022 versus the 6.2 that is budgeted in fiscal year 2023. So when we come back to Council on June 22nd for our final budget adoption, that difference in that Charges for Services will no longer be a difference of $991,000, but closer to about $491,000. As far as any other categories that are close to that 450, 500,000 mark, we also have a category called Use of Money and Property. This includes various leases, citywide, where we're deriving revenue from renting out properties or land leases, park rentals, what have you. That category also includes our investment earnings, and unfortunately, we are expecting investment earnings, unrealized losses in the next fiscal year. Some of that decrease is the rationale for why you see a decrease of $482,000 in that Use of Money and Property category. So I am going to stop there. I'm moving into general fund revenue, but wanted to see if there were any questions before I move into the next section.
Thanks, Andrea. I'm seeing no questions initially. I just wanted to add in on our water and sewer fees. So sewer is billed basically off of water consumption as well in large part, and as we see statewide water restrictions and gauging a little bit of extra rain this spring is, I think, the main drivers for why we're anticipating some of that used to be lower. And again, kind of a conservative number, we are already seeing wastewater fees coming a little bit higher than when we originally were estimating, working on our budget just six weeks ago. So we'll continue to monitor that, but we want to be conservative, recognizing that even though we do not have a water crisis up here, the state does, and some of those statewide mandates will be hitting throughout the region, so.
That's a great point, City Manager Deemer. So moving on to our general fund revenue, as far as the main categories that are close to that 450, 500,000 mark, we are expecting a decrease on our other revenue category. And this category consists of what we call operating transfers and some other miscellaneous revenues, such as public works reimbursement revenues, parks reimbursement revenues, what have you. So we are seeing a decrease expected of 712,000 compared to prior fiscal year. And the major driver for this is that the general fund is not able to, the general fund is supporting some of the other city funds in a greater capacity than it has in the past. And our operating transfers are basically reimbursements for operational costs that the general fund will send dollars to other funds to help them operate throughout the fiscal year, but the vice versa happens as well. If there are certain expenditures that are paid out of general fund, but the revenue source is related to another fund, that initial fund will send dollars back to general fund. But one of the areas that we're seeing an increase where the need is greater in the fund and the draw on general fund is greater than prior year is related to operating for our streets. So our Fund 207 for streets and then our Fund 209 for traffic safety, we're seeing an increase of about $435,000, where general fund is contributing that additional $435,000 more than prior fiscal year. One of the other revenue areas where we're actually seeing an increase compared to last year over that 400,000, 450,000 mark is our taxes category. And just the major highlights for the three line items that we're including larger increases for compared to budget in 2022 includes our property tax revenue, where we're including a $75,000 increase compared to prior year. And that aligns with how we're tracking in the current fiscal year. We are seeing increased revenues in the property tax category. Then for our sales tax category, we are including $229,000 increase in additional revenues to general fund compared to fiscal year 2022. And for our transactions and use tax, we're including another $197,000 compared to fiscal year 2022. And I do want to note that we work very closely with our third-party consultants, HDL, for sales tax, transactions use tax, and property tax. Historically, we have included about 80% to 85% of HDL's projections for sales tax and transactions use tax. And then typically, by the time we get to mid-year, we're revising upward, and then we're seeing cash flows far exceed expectations by the time that we're closing out our fiscal year. So this year, we're still conservative with our budget estimates, but we've increased that estimate to use about 95% or 96% of what HDL is estimating, and that leaves us with about a $240,000 buffer compared to what they're estimating, but still revising upward compared to where we would have been at in prior budget cycles. So I am going to stop there before I head into the expenditures categories for citywide and then for general fund to see if there are any questions.
I did have one question. I was wondering what the effects of us transitioning the two hotels in Valley West, I know that that's going to affect the budget, and so if you knew what exactly those numbers were and how did we make up for that loss of revenue?
Yeah. Thank you. So I don't have that in front of me. I can pull that up to answer that question a little bit later, perhaps in the presentation. I do have the calculation. We did account for those two hotels being converted as a reduction in our transient occupancy tax revenues, but I would say it may be a little bit more conservative. I'm not, I'm not 100% familiar with when those two hotels will come online as far as housing or alternative housing instead of hotels, but what I've included in the budget was assuming as of the beginning of the fiscal year that they would be converted over, but I can pull up that number later in the presentation for what that reduction that we included in the transient occupancy tax revenue projection is.
And I can add maybe just in some general terms, you know, what we're seeing in terms of the trends of our bed tax is that the cost of the hotel rooms is increasing. So that's why we're seeing, we haven't added a lot of new beds, maybe a few Airbnbs or short-stay rentals into the system, but we're seeing the cost per room per night. And so since it is a percentage of that cost, we are seeing an increase. So if you look in your package in your general budget message on page three, our actuals for the 2021 fiscal year of TOT that we brought in was about 1.6 million right now, and this was really based on our mid-year estimate. Our TOT for this year that we're in right now is estimated at 1.4 million. We've basically kept with that estimate because our 2122, we're going to come in probably close to 1.7 anyway, substantially higher than that number that we're showing at mid-year. So I think we've backed out about 250,000 anticipating the losses from the Red Roof Inn and the Days Inn. We were hopeful and are still going to be hopeful that the Fairwinds will transition and stay in short-stay rental, but you know, given the needs for housing in the area, we're not positive. They haven't made a final decision on what that renovation is going to be. So that particular one doesn't, hadn't generated a lot of TOT tax last year, but we didn't account for that transition this year. We had actually hoped it'd be a little higher, but we didn't build anything in. So that's in general terms where that sits. I still think that 1.4 estimate for this year is fair, conservative, but not grossly conservative.
Hey, no, thank you. That answers my question, and I guess it shows you there's always a silver lining, you know? Because as somebody who's recently paid those really high hotel rates, that's all I, but I guess yay for that for right now.
Thank you.
All right. I think we can move to expenses?
Yep. Okay. Thank you very much. So as far as citywide expenditure, it's very similar to the breakout for our revenues. The graph is just depicting pretty much the outliers in a visual representation for our proposed 2023 budget compared to 2022 and our 2021 actuals. And the, one of the outliers here looks like our capital outlays as far as the setup of the graph. So starting with our materials and services category, we're estimating a $2 million increase in our proposed budget for fiscal year 2023, and this has fluctuated across the board depending on what fund it is. We've seen decreases and increases when drilling down into the detail, but one of the most notable increases is related to our Fund 210 STIP or our Street Transportation Improvement Program. We're seeing an increase of 786,000 compared to last year, and this is for our Sunset LK Wood Project and our old Arcata Road design. We're also seeing a $344,000 increase in our American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA fund in materials and services compared to prior year, and that's for the miscellaneous projects that are budgeted under the ARPA umbrella. For our capital outlay category, we're expecting an increase of 4.3 million to ride at a 30.5 million in the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget, and this is derived from our $1.3 million capital increase on our water fund and $2.8 million capital increase on our wastewater fund. For the water fund, it's mostly related to our Tank 1C improvement, and for the wastewater fund, it's related to the Phase 1 construction of our wastewater treatment plant project. Then we also have our personnel service increase of $959,000 compared to last fiscal year as far as budgeted figures. The largest single fund that is impacted compared to prior fiscal year is ARPA, and that is showing a $273,000 increase compared to last year as we have, I believe it's six full-time equivalents budgeted out of the ARPA funds in the next fiscal year. There are other items, as City Manager Deemer pointed to earlier in the budget presentation, that we're going into year two of our cost of living allowance or COLA increase, the 4% COLA, our Step 5A for our city members effective June 26, our unfunded accrued liability increases for payments to CalPERS and workers' compensation insurance increases, and I will highlight those dollar differences in a future slide for those personnel service cost increase. We're also expecting a decrease in other expenditures, and this other expenditure category relates mostly to our grant funding sources for various housing-related funds, such as our basic fund, our home program income fund, our CDBG or Community Development Block Grant Program Income Fund, and housing improvement projects. We just have a decrease of how we're programming some of those funds for various projects and other programs throughout the fiscal year next year. I believe our community development has different grant funds programmed in the next year to tap some of those and a mix of the grant funds versus some of the program income funds, but we are expecting a decrease for some of those other expenditure lines. Then we also have debt service, where we're expecting a decrease of $1 million in expenditures in the next year, and this is related to an outlier where we paid off our INI or inflow and infiltration note in, or will follow 2021 to the State Water Resources Control Board. So because that debt is no longer in the books, we made that one-time payment, it's kicking out and causing, you know, a million-dollar fluctuation for that 1.1 million-dollar payment, but our debt service will get back to more normalized levels in the next fiscal year. And I'm going to move on to our general fund expenditures unless there are any questions on this slide.
Nope, you can keep going.
Okay, wonderful. So for general fund, there isn't one particular area I wanted to highlight or point out, but just there's nothing that is fluctuating or kicking out over the $400,000 mark. Let's say similar consistent, it's consistent with some of the other expenditure categories we're seeing citywide, and one of the larger increases is related to our personal services category, which, like I said, I'll highlight some of those changes on the next slide. So as far as some of the major drivers for expenditure increases citywide, once again, the 4% cost of living allowance goes into effect on June 26. That is an increase to our personal expenditures of about $389,000. We have an expected increase to our CalPERS unfunded accrued liability for the next fiscal year of $267,000. Our Step 5A is a 2.5% increase for eligible employees that will go into effect on June 26. That is an estimated $106,000 increase in our personal expenditures. Then we also have a workers' compensation insurance increase expected of approximately $40,000 compared to prior fiscal year. Outside of personal expenses, we also are expecting our property and liability insurance to increase by $335,000. And I just wanted to put that into perspective. Last year, our property and liability insurance premiums were a little over, or sorry, this next year, our property and liability insurance totals are going to be a little over $1 million. The $335,000 increase is a 45% increase over our premiums of $740,000 in the last year. So one of the major drivers that we're hearing from our insurance carrier and reinsurance carriers is that the increase to our property and liability insurance is due to frequency of severity, and what does that mean? So for the insurance carriers and the reinsurers, the number of their claims are increasing, and the average claim cost is also increasing. It's very difficult for the insurers to actually insure in the state of California, and the liability carriers also are hesitant to insure public agencies. There's also been a decrease of reinsurers and, over the last several years. So the market is limited, and we are feeling the effects of that in what our property and liability insurance premiums are going to be over the next fiscal year. So I just wanted to point out some of our larger expenditures that we're expecting to see in the next fiscal year. And my next slide is highlighting just some of the capital outlay expenditures that you'll see in your packet.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry.
Of course, of course.
So this personnel expenditures, that is what So this personnel expenditures, that is what City Manager Deemer, that's what we already had set aside? Is that what you, like you said earlier?
Yeah, the 4% COLA piece, the Step 5A piece were both set aside. And we had one, I'm looking, I'm looking at your screen Andrea, so you're here. There was, what was the other additional that we had preset aside for the MOUs that you've included in this year's budget?
Yeah, so the Step 5A was included in the 4% COLA, but I want to point out this number that's represented is citywide for expenditures. The general fund impact is a little bit smaller for fiscal year 2022 as far as the total for the 4% in the Step 5A that we had set aside for general fund. And then City Manager, I don't know if for this set aside, you also wanted me to talk about the like carryover for, I don't, it's not LK Wood, but carryover for one of our capital projects that's included too, or if that was a separate topic?
Yeah, we can wait till we get to projects.
Okay.
I will point, yeah, I'll just point out and potentially our Assistant City Manager has other things to add in terms of the liability insurance increase. The council knows that we did add our old kind of 14 REMF cities into a larger pool and in part because this is what we've seen coming is that it's becoming harder and harder to fund affordable municipal insurance around property and liability. This is in part some of the catastrophic losses that we've seen statewide on fires, even though they don't affect us as much up here. So they worked very hard. We're now, how many cities strong?
50.
So we're 50 cities that are pooling our resources to try to negotiate contracts to keep these insurance prices as low as possible. But this was a really significant increase and hit to our budget this year.
All right, go ahead Andrea.
Thank you. So this next slide is representation of printed page 23 or packet page 29. I'm only highlighting the highest dollar value of capital outlays or part of our capital improvement program. These four projects, and I know the wastewater treatment plant, it's two different projects, but it's still related to the wastewater treatment plant represent about 65% of our total capital outlays. And just bringing to light that we're beginning phase one of our wastewater treatment plant, the 10.5 million. I know we have highlighted, you know, some of the fluctuations for Tank 1C and then our budget highlights that that's included. Our water's still on replacement of 2.5 million and our wastewater treatment plant are for our UV project of 2.3 million. But just high level, major drivers and representing a very large chunk of our total CIP program for the next year.
Now, is, there's a possibility that you were saying that some of this wastewater treatment funds will be grant funded and then we can pay, and then we'll be able to pay the fund back? Is, is that what I understood?
That's correct. So for the wastewater treatment plant construction of the 10.5 million, my understanding is as we're applying for total phase one, phase, phase one funds, our initial application was over $64 million. There's the potential that there's debt service that we're applying for, but that the State Water Resources Control Board is also reviewing our application to see what portion of that, if any, would be grant funded for our wastewater treatment plant phase one upgrade.
We feel like we're sitting in a good position, but we don't want to guarantee and promise that to the community yet. But if any project is going to get funded, we are first in line because we're what they call in that industry shovel ready. And there are infrastructure monies that have come down through the pandemic and they want to see those monies get out the door. So we'll continue to aggressively really chase those funds. Our storage Tank 1C is grant funded in the budget currently, as is the majority of the UV project. And the steelone replacement is under that same auspice of we'll be looking at debt service, which is already included in our rates. But we are also actively seeking grant service or grant funds for that project as well right now.
And then my next slides are depictions, sorry, did I, was someone about to ask your question?
Nope, you're good.
Wonderful. Thank you. So my next slide, two slides are related to our general fund reserves. So this first slide is just a representation or what we call like a walk or a roll in it from an accounting perspective to show where we expect that will end fiscal year 2022 with our available reserves or fund balance for general fund. Taking all the activity for the fiscal year that's projected out for 2023 budget and then see where we land as we close out fiscal year 2023 for our general fund reserve. So you know, taxes, all the positive numbers, revenues or cash inflows, and then the negative numbers deducting what we expect to spend out of the fund. And as you'll note, we start at 6.5 million, but then we're estimating that we end at 5.8 million. And as City Manager Deemer did point out at the beginning of the meeting, we are utilizing some of that set aside for the COLAs to be able to somewhat augment the fact that our expenditures are a little bit greater than our revenues. And part of that is related to the implementation of our cost of living allowances. I just wanted to kind of put this out there for where we expect to end the general fund reserve balance as of June 30th of 2023. And my next slide might add a little bit more clarity to based off of where we're starting as what we're expecting at fiscal year end close for 2022 versus where I think we'll end for fiscal year 2023. So this slide, the green portion of the bar chart is showing what council's policy is that we retain or maintain a 25% operating reserve for general fund. That green chart minimum balance is equivalent to a little over $4 million. Where we expect to end the current fiscal year that we're in, fiscal year 2022, we expect to end at a little over $6 million, 6.5 million. That's a 39% general fund operating reserve. Where we think we'll end, when we close out everything for fiscal year 2023 on that yellow or light yellow shaded estimated balance within the bar graph is where we expect our fiscal year 2023 general fund reserves or available cash reserves balance to end. So I'm going to stop there to see if there are any questions on the reserve balance.
So the end of this fiscal year, and I just want to point out, I mean, we, we have tried to budget more close to reality to reduce cutting additional expenditures because we have a community that's very interested in getting back to the service levels pre-pandemic that we were able to provide. So, but that being said, we do still have conservative estimates within the budget. Even within that, we are estimating that you will end the next fiscal year with a reserve balance of 35%. We will also continue to work as we go through that fiscal year to see if we can add anything to that and be as fiscally prudent as possible. But it's that balance, right? We want to spend that money because we want that service out on the street and in our community. And at the same time, your budget is very sound, sitting with 10% higher than your, than your reserve goal right now, so.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that, especially after, you know, coming out of pandemic years to have something so balanced and still be able to add to reserve. So thank you.
And then I believe we're segueing into budget highlights. And City Manager Deemer, did you want me to go through budget highlights and did you want to transition into ARPA?
Yeah, I can take this piece. So, and we'll go through these, and it might just be best to go through them when we get to individual budgets. We were just, there is a lot, and we just listed maybe the top 45 or so projects that are, that are in your memo. Sorry. But there are some things that are just, I think, really exciting in this budget. And one of them, I mean, the wastewater treatment plant phase one construction, there's just really no way to understate that this has been a tremendous, tremendous lift from our staff, really for over 10 years, but really hard and earnest for the last three. So to be, what you see is budgeted, you know, 10.9 million is what we think we can actually spend and get out the door this next fiscal year. But that project is out to bid right now. You will be awarding a bid for probably somewhere between 35 and 40 million dollars, you know? It's just, we will be spending that over the course of at least two, if not three fiscal years. We're excited to be starting up the community ambassador program just last week. You approved those job descriptions, so we'll be getting those out and getting those positions hired. The continued support of safe parking and the hotel conversions are in this budget. You've talked tremendously about the implementation of organics recycling, which will be, is a state mandate, but how we do that locally is we'll be working on really in earnest this next fiscal year. As this council knows, we also have a grant that's in this budget to clean up the contamination at the Little Lakes property. That's been many years in the making and are actively right now working on finalizing those tax agreements to be able to redevelop that property. In your budget, there are two small increases in staff. One is one full-time position as an IT technician, and we'll talk about that when we get to that activity. And then the other is we have all really part-time bus drivers right now, so we're adding one three-quarter time bus driver. It's a fairly small increment, but that's how we operate to start to boost staffing in the transit division as we bring back more service. We're also installing a new 1 million gallon water tank. So again, a project that's been in the works for many years, but adds considerable storage to our system, not only for fire and pressure flows right now, but certainly for emergency preparedness and for growth in the community. On the energy side, we have Tesla battery backup systems that will be installed at City Hall and several other smaller city facilities. We'll have an election this year coming up in November. And then I think the, the business or the construction community is excited for us to be launching online building permits. So there's lots of other things, but just a few of those that we wanted to highlight just to give you kind of the scope of what's included in the budget. And I don't know if you want to advance Andrea. I think we'll go through, before we get to ARPA, I think we'll probably stop for public comment, but let me see what else you have moving forward. I think you go to ARPA next.
Yeah, the next slide is ARPA. And then after that, it's just a breakdown of the department and division, I guess, the schedule for them to review their budget.
Okay, let's just, we can just hold on the ARPA, and I think maybe we'll turn it back to the mayor for a minute for questions, or if you want to take public comment before we go into individual departments.
Sure. Are there any questions before we switch gears for a minute? So since we, we have a ways to go in the meeting and there are a lot of people here to speak with, for public comment, so we thought we would move that up. And doesn't mean you have to leave when you're done speaking, but you can if you want. So you know, there's election activities going on this evening and fun things, so. But before we do the public comment, we're going to start with a short presentation from Main Street. And so because Main Street is putting in a significant ask for ARPA funding, and I'm also the liaison to Main Street, I have been since I was elected in 2020, I thought it would be a good idea for them, for some of the members to share like why we're, you know, we're asking for that amount of funding and offer our time for questions. So if we want to go ahead and start with that slideshow?
I'm Monica, I'm the Vice President of the, of Arcata Main Street. And we just wanted to, yeah, like you said, talk about why we're asking for this funding and kind of COVID impact on our nonprofit. And we're looking for funding for the Executive Director. So I have a short presentation for you guys. I'll keep it as short as possible because I do know that we have a lot to get through. So I'll keep it as fast as possible.
So, hold on just a second before you start Monica. If our, if our IT could, and he's already done it, okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay. And I don't have access, so I'll just ask you to switch to slide. Okay. So I'm here to submit the proposal for funding requests for the next three years for $100,000 over the, $300,000, $100,000 over the next three years. So Arcata Main Street can take on a full-time Executive Director and a part-time marketing administrator. We're also proposing to carry forward a merger with Arcata Chamber of Commerce in the third year, so that's going to be '24, '25, that that Executive Director will oversee along with that marketing administrator. So we're asking for those three years of funding for that. And before I get into the thick of it, we can go to the next slide. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the resiliency of our organization over the last few years during the pandemic and kind of what we've done and behind the scenes of what's been going on. We haven't had an Executive Director since 2019, so everything that we've done over the last few years has been from our small staff and volunteer by the board. They've been largely, largely self-funded by, you know, whatever we can come up with through vendor fees, other, other things to be able to put on events for the community. And just some of those are in the slideshow. So the Sunday Art Market is one of those. We've also done the Season of Wonder and Light, awesome Arcata coupon book, the hashtag shop Arcata and choose Humboldt campaigns, Cal Poly Humboldt Spring Preview, Arts Arcata passports and Sunday Art Markets, and created a bunch of promotional material for students, alumni, students, or alumni-owned businesses, and a lot of other things that we've done that has been self-funded the last few years. And because it's been self-funded, it really hasn't been. A lot of this has come through all of us putting in a lot of hours of volunteer work and our staff going above and beyond and volunteering their time as well as their part-time paid positions. So I just really wanted to highlight that before we get into the ask and kind of what we've been doing. And then we can switch sides. So the ask, like I said, it's $200,000 over the next two years to fund the Executive Director to implement our work plan over the next few years. So we sat down recently and came up with a two-year work plan up until 2024 with help, a lot of help from different board members. And Ursula Bischoff stepped in to help us out with that a lot and oversee what our work plan is going to be and how we need to dedicate our time and what our Executive Director is going to oversee. So that's for the next two years for them to oversee our work plan, which has been submitted already to council. We're also seeking funding to support that Arcata Chamber of Commerce and Arcata Main Street merger. And that's the $100,000 in '24, '25. We can just skip the next one. And then what that Executive Director is going to do is, like I said, the work plan objectives, they're also going to oversee Oyster Festival production and execution. That's been mainly self-done through volunteer efforts last year and this year. Design and implementation of organizational operational structures. And then that communication administrator position is going to oversee hopefully their Visit Arcata website, that, you know, all the social media, Instagram, Facebook, all those things, getting the word out there of what's happening on the plaza, other things that's going on with city council, that marketing administrator will help with. And we developed our work plan on these four committees basically that we're, we're doing. So I just wanted to highlight how these committees are going to be working with council goals and how our Executive Director is going to oversee those things. So our promotion committee is a planning committee. So those efforts go towards Oyster Festival planning, the Visit Arcata website, multiple other different events we have going on throughout the year. The past Executive Directors were the ones that were majority planning in Oyster Fest. Like I said, since we haven't had that, we have not, normally we start in November. We haven't been able to do that because we haven't had funding to do that. So that person is going to make sure that over the course of, you know, for, for 2023 Oyster Festival, it's going to be, you know, organized and overseen for that year and all of the other events that we have going on. Our Economic Vitality Committee, we hope to keep working with the city to maintain the economic recovery collaborative and help implement and support the community ambassador program through this committee. So the Executive Director funding will help out with implementing that program along with the rest of those marketing opportunities through that marketing administrative position. Our Design Committee will oversee the Strategic Arts Plan and the beautification and implementing a majority of different things of for beautification around the city. But that's just one of the things that this Executive Director is going to oversee and make sure these things are able to be done throughout our city. And then we've got our Organizational Committee and how that's going to, you know, fall in line with what we've got going on here at the city to increase connectivity of the business districts. That Executive Director will help out with that and, and attended and participate in all the city committees and commissions. So just having somebody that's able to have the capacity to come to all the meetings. A lot of us don't have, you know, we're working full-time on top of the volunteer hours we already have at the board. So it'd be great to have an Executive Director to be able to be involved with what's going on at the city. So Arcata Main Street and volunteers have given our all to, to a meeting and exceeding expectation with very little resources these last few years. We've realized the only way to meet our goals is by recruiting and securing a full-time Executive Director. So with this funding, we'll be able to fulfill our mission to foster business vitality in Arcata's downtown core by advocating for and responding to community needs, by providing members in the community with opportunities to get involved in activities, events, and projects in support of key issues. So all in all, this position is really going to help Arcata Main Street, help the city more with its goals over the next few years and really help with that marketing and making sure that people know what's going on downtown and all the other resources that we need for our community through Arcata Main Street. And that's all I have for my presentation. I don't know if we have any questions right now.
Sure. So first of all, thank you. Thank you, Arcade of Main Street. I know how hard you work. My husband has been a board member for many, many years. I've helped with the last several Oyster Fests. I mean, we were planning it with a very, like, four people last year, so I know how hard you work. Shoshana, I'll say it, thank you. You, let's just take a moment, because you are the definition of Arcade of Main Street. I mean, you really have done amazing things. Every email I've gotten is Shoshana, so thank you. That being said, so tell me about this executive director position. Do you have a job description yet?
We do have a job description. I didn't put it in the presentation, but we're hoping to go, we already have it ready to go and for our next board meeting, hoping to implement that in there for, we haven't started searching for that executive director position because we don't have funding, but we do have a job description and hoping to move forward on hiring someone.
Do you have a salary in mind?
It's going to be, I mean, it's going to be less than $100,000 a year for sure, so.
Or otherwise, I'd apply for that right now.
Right? So we're hoping that a portion of the, of what the funding will go towards is toward marketing campaigns and a lot of social media ads, and then towards that marketing position to staff that part-time. And then, you know, based off of that, what we are able to budget and what we're able to do for the executive director will go. So, you know, the list of priority, we, yeah, we're not sure yet.
Sure. Do you have a timeline of when you hope to have that person hired by?
We're hoping to have them by the end of this summer. We have somebody who is kind of an interim director right now, but that's also part-time work with whatever we're able to afford, and she's currently, on top of all of Shoshana's efforts, doing the Sunday Art Markets and also a lot of volunteer work with Oyster Fest. So we're hoping after Oyster Fest, we'll be able to focus on hiring this person by the end of summer.
So how do you, because I am the liaison for the Chamber, and we have an ED position that's flying now, we hope to hire by the end of July. So tell me what you see, I mean, you said, talking about, how do you see, like, an ED, I mean, are you going to hire someone for only a couple of years? And then how is that going to work with an ED of Chamber, an ED of Main Street if you feel like you're going to merge together?
So both organizations are hoping for, neither of us know what this looks like. We're looking at other models on what that executive director position is going to look like. With possibly still retaining both to focus on each one, we're not really sure organizationally what that's going to look like. Our, part of our ask for that year is to oversee that and have somebody staffed and qualified to be able to oversee that merger and to answer all those questions for us because I, you know, if we had an executive director, I'm sure they'd be able to answer that, and I, yeah, I don't have the answers for that right now.
I think that's all the questions. Thank you so much, that was a lovely presentation.
I think for me, the, the merger and that, that third year funding is the, kind of the question and the uncertainty of it. I know I'm, that's just kind of an unknown for all of us, so, you know, I don't know how we want to, gets to that point, approach that. But, you know, for the, the other two years, the idea is for Main Street to become self-funding again and self-sufficient. So there, it's just an ask to get that established and be able to, you know, get back to business as usual.
Right, because, I mean, normally, Oyster Fest is a huge moneymaker that kind of funds AMS for the rest, for the rest of the year, and that's why you're able to do these Sunday Art Markets and Arts Arcade and all these wonderful programs. Unfortunately, for the last several years, it's been shoestring, and so I get that. So hopefully, you know, starting with this Oyster Fest, we'll be able to get back into putting some of the funds back into Main Street.
Yeah, that's definitely what we're hoping, and it's, it has been really, I mean, when I first came on as the liaison, it, we, there were a lot of challenges, and that was, you know, it was kind of a rough time, and it was right in the middle of the pandemic, and it was rough. And I've just watched, like, the new board come on and be really consistent, and everybody just pulling together and working really well together, very, it's a very sweet group of people, for lack of a better term, sorry. But, you know, there can be issues with Main Street organizations, and we don't have those right now, where everybody's just really working as a team for this common goal. And a lot of people that are hired, you know, the few people that are getting paid are working far, far more. And so it's with that that everything's been done. And I know a lot of people in the community have been frustrated over a lack of the big Oyster Fest and some of the other things that Main Street was able to provide in the past, but, so that's what we're hoping is to, if we can get, you know, some of this money and then build back that confidence to in the community and, you know, just bring Main Street back to what it could be and what it should be.
Sure. And I will say that this is a complete, I think with the exception of Alex, this is a completely new board than it was in 2021, so, good job.
I'll say a couple things, no, just, just that I'm on, I'm the same page as you guys, and, you know, thank you so much for presenting, Monica. And that, yeah, this third year does sound just a little, you know, in flux and, and like a question of, yeah, will there be a merger with Chamber? What does that look like? How does that play out? But, I mean, also, this is exactly what our ARPA funds are for, to help with economic recovery and to help our local businesses, you know, be able to thrive and succeed. And so I just, yeah, I'd be, you know, excited to help fund this with ARPA funds, and then also just, you know, wondering, you know, what kind of mechanism for checking in with Main Street do we have? You know, having a liaison, of course, is wonderful, but also being, you know, having, you know, I don't know, presentations from you guys, what's going on, and maybe a check-in every once in a while to see how our money is being well-spent. But, yeah, just thank you guys so much for all of that you do in the community.
Should we go ahead and go with public comment? Okay, so if you, we'll start with people that are in, here in person. So if you would just, if anybody wants to speak on anything, does not have to be on this current topic, anything on our agenda, so any ways in which you would like to see money spent or any question, you know, comments, concerns that you have, if you could go ahead and line up behind the podium, and we'll take the people that are here in person first. And then if they're, after everybody that's here in person speaks, we will go to the online. And I know it's like awkward to all line up, but it actually makes it go faster than if I have to keep calling people up. So, yeah, thank you.
My name is Philip Dresser. I, I used to live here. Trying to be funny. Okay. I lived here for 35 years, and 29 of those years I was a active business person on the plaza. And I moved away for 13 years, came back last fall. My perspective on Main Street is that, back in the, in the 70s, it's something that we really needed. That's when I was working on our plaza. And the changes that have come about because of that organization, I think, are very valuable. So I guess to make a long story short, I would say that I really do appreciate the city offering this funding to move us forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I've never done this before. I am Shoshana, and I have been meandered in during the virtual Oyster Festival in 2020 and continue to provide some virtual and then navigating the county's spectator-free event process, which was an interesting one, and really found a delight and be able to champion the small businesses around and kind of avoid the step into during some kind of funky times. And it's been wonderful to be able to continue to create these little events that have been pretty self-sustaining, but it would be really glorious to see this organization take its role as it, we got granted with a, with a California Main Street and Main Street America grant to be a member officially. And before I really knew what that was, they asked me to be a presenter at the national conference, which was hilarious. I didn't know what the rural economic ecosystem was, and I was presenting on it, but we had just done Halloween and some pretty spectacular, fun things. So it was, it was a great to learn a lot about that. This year, they gave, I asked for an extra year of that membership because now we know how to utilize that membership, and it's been really great to get Main Street kind of realigned to that national and, and California Main Street process and be more woven into that system, because there is a pretty great format and structure there for Main Street organizations. And I think it's really an amazing opportunity, coming out of the pandemic, to kind of realign the organization with that, with those, with those goals, with the help of our amazing board members, and kind of bring it back to that, to that. And, yeah, I'm excited to continue on. I've been just volunteering and, and working a little bit this, right now, as I've been hopped off to the county library, but I'm excited to stay involved with the organization and, and keep going, because I love Arcade a lot, and I can go back to being the Halloween fairy and Snow Flight Queen and find someone who is capable and amazing to be the executive director and push it into that next, next moment. I really appreciate the, the attention to the idea of using some COVID relief money to, to reinfuse and refoundationize this organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Shoshana. I just want to know what ball gown you wore to make that presentation to the main?
Hey there, I'm Jace. I anchor the corner of the plaza these days with eco-gravy deals, and I just have to say that without Shoshana's help, I, it was just so scary for all of us. The social decay, the stores closing, you know, what's going to happen? And then Shoshana comes in with all these great little fun ideas that we can do that just really kept all of us that were trying to stay afloat, afloat. And without Main Street, really with somebody, you got to stay on the board, that's all I can say, because I've been involved, I was involved with Main Street prior to it. And honestly, a little bit about herding cats and a lot of infighting, and, I don't know, maybe the disaster brought us all together and realized what was important, and I'd love to see that continue with, with the kinds of energy that we've had in the last three, four, five years. Because of the decay on the plaza, I mean, it's ever-present, and, and there are so many factors involved. I think the, being able to liaison with the new ambassadors and the Chamber of Commerce and cohesively bring that together would be awesome. And if we can get the funding to kind of make that leap, we need it, we really do. Thanks.
Thank you, Jace.
Hello? Hello, I'm Jeff Nagin, owner of the world famous Arcade of Liquor on the Plaza, 9th and H, some hate it, some love it, but, so I've been down there on that corner for 17 years, and I've been part of Arcade of Main Street off and on. But the same thing as the previous speaker said, is like, a lot of talk, but not a lot happened, you know? So I was like, kind of give up, and then when they would ask for membership dues, I'm like, well, I don't see anything happening, you know? So with the presentation that was just given, it seems like, wow, okay, Arcade of Main Street has it together, maybe we'll see some action or some more, I don't know, something come about it. Some things I would like, you know, Arcade of Main Street is all about downtown, it's our main street, so it's like, I needed to bring people in. We, okay, everybody, okay, so Arcade of Main Street informs people around our town about the events, but it's like, we need to harvest people off 101. I mean, there's only so many dollars in our bubble, so there's dollars flying by every day on 101, so I was always like, I'm a huge proponent of a billboard, or some kind of arcade sign saying, yo, we're here. Every time I drive up and down Highway 101, I see every other city sign. I mean, come on, Ukiah, Garberville. Oh, and it's like, dude, are we afraid of our town? I mean, are we ashamed because there's nothing saying, turn, there's, wow, there's a Victorian plaza, there's nothing. Every sign says shop, dine, stay. That's what we want, that's where the dollars are. So I was hoping with maybe the merger of the Chamber, I've also talked to the Chamber about the billboard, I've called other cities, say, yo, who does your billboard? And they're like, well, our Chamber does it. So I go to Chamber, I'm like, well, they're like, that's not our responsibility, there's no funding. So maybe with the merger, we could get a billboard up. Anyways, you can see I'm very passionate about that. Maybe also, you know, when I go to other small towns, there's the tourist information sign, that blue I. I mean, I go to these small towns in Oregon, there's a little storefront with the I, could be incorporated into the Arcade of Main Street office, so people can come, get a map of our little downtown districts with little shops numbered. I mean, those kind of help, give people, you know, where stuff is around town, because if we stop, people are like, yo, where's the Creamery District? You know, even if you go to, oh, shoot, downtown Eureka, they have those pole signs with arrows telling, you know, where Old Town is and such. Anyways, all for funding for Arcade of Main Street, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGarry. I'm just a resident of Arcade these days. I've lived in Humboldt County for 10 years now. One of my memorable things from 10 years ago was attending my first Oyster Fest in 2012, and I had arrived there after 3 o'clock, and it was a wasteland in so many ways. And it has been an interesting evolution to see what Main Street has become in a much better way since those 10 years ago, where I was actually assaulted inside a storefront because of the wastedness of the people and the surroundings. And the model of Oyster Fest being the fundraiser for Main Street, I think, is a concern, and it looks like having smaller events and reorganizing in a way to recognize that Oyster Fest doesn't need to be what it was, and it can be back to the family a little bit. But in looking for, to the future is what we need to start doing. So I really like the idea of the Chamber and Main Street consolidating. I, I've thought about that for a long time, and I'm glad to see it's finally being discussed and maybe will happen in three years. So that's great. But I just want to stress the need for looking back to remember and see how things were and how we must, we must look forward to see how much better they can be. And I always say this in the context of the climate reality. So we can have fun, but we have to have fun in a really responsible way to our environment and the community. And so, and going forward, I, you know, support the city supporting an organization like Main Street, provided that its model of Oyster Fest being the only fundraiser is not considered, and that we really look to being climate-conscious and environmental and zero-waste and eco-positive like this Oyster Fest is supposed to be. Because I don't want anyone to go through what I went through 10 years ago at the Oyster Fest, so, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Hi, my name is Christina Augello, and I am a new resident to Arcade, as well as a new business owner. I'm the artistic director of Exit Theater on the Plaza. And I came here a year and a half ago during tumultuous times, and the first organization that made me feel at home here was Arcade of Main Street, so I really appreciate that. It's also helped me build awareness about Exit Theater, brought artists to my attention, gave me lots of good times, and I fully support their request for funding for an executive director. I see the organization is moving forward, being very supportive of all of us, and I think that'll be a tremendous way to make that happen. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm Carol Eli. I've lived here 54 years, and I support, I like the idea of merging both organizations. Also, I'm a supporter of Cal Poly. I'd like to see, I know those organizations make the students feel welcome in Arcade and do a lot of things to welcome them. And so anything that supports Cal Poly is important to me because of the revenue it brings in, not Arcade, but all of Humboldt County. It's our best resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person before we go to online comments?
Hi, my name is Jenny Ray, and I have a fairly new business on the Arcade of Plaza. I opened three months before COVID, so I'm really actually very thankful that I'm still here, and I give a lot of thanks to Arcade of Main Street. I grew up in Arcade, and I had the expectation that I would just have all this community support, and to be honest, it was Arcade of Main Street that held my hand and helped me to persevere. So I love Arcade, and I want to continue, and I'm excited that we're having this conversation because we will definitely be stronger in numbers. And I felt kind of alone, and this really gives me a different perspective, and I'm definitely in support of this, and I hope that you'll consider what we all want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Hi, my name's Jasmine Granite. I've owned a store on the Plaza for about 15 years, and I've just watched a lot of different I've owned a store on the Plaza for about 15 years and I've just watched a lot of different people, I guess, go through Main Street, like running it. And it just seems like it's usually a short-lived position. So maybe if it was a paid position, it would be someone who like stayed longer and invested more time into it. And like the other people speaking, I'm also in favor of having, you know, more positive events on the Plaza to keep it more family friendly and maybe more events like directed towards young adults and teens. Like I feel like there's, you know, things for older people and little people, but then maybe in between isn't considered as much. So that would be nice. And yeah, I think the merger sounds like a good idea. So just so we could get more ideas and more people, like I was saying, that are going to stay in the position and keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anyone online that's wanting to comment?
We do. So those of you who are online, just to remind you that this is a chance to talk about any topic on the agenda tonight, any requests that you have to support or not to support for funding something that's in the budget, go ahead and raise your hand now. Our first speaker will be Carly. Go ahead, Carly.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to show my support for the funding for Arcata Main Street. I think it is an incredible vehicle for Arcata and Humboldt County, as somebody else just mentioned as well. It's really headed in a positive direction with Entrepreneurs Club and Eco Positive Committee are super exciting as well. And I think Shoshana's done a great job setting this organization up towards a positive future and there's a huge demand for this position to be filled. And I'm very excited that you guys are considering the funding and yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Carly. Okay, last call for putting up your hand on Zoom. All right, I see no other public comment on Zoom. Mute Carly. All right, no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for everyone that spoke this evening. So next we will head into department review. So we'll have the different department heads highlighting their budget requests.
All right, we're going to start this evening with Community Development Director David Loyah and on your packet, we'll be starting on page 62.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember and Community. I'll provide a high-level overview. And then Deputy Director Dart is here as well to weigh in on some of the specifics and to help me get through our budget here, as she does every year. So I just wanted to tie back to some of the key projects that you had identified in your goal setting real quick before we start, noting in particular the economic programs that you'd identified in Section 5 of those goals and projects, in particular B and D, where we talked a little bit about updating the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And we've been thinking about that and have a little bit of a recommendation for how to shift that slightly and still meet those goals and maybe even do so in a more effective fashion. There's a lot in there as well about homelessness and housing for lower-income folks that we also try and address in this budget. And then I'm excited to partner with Environmental Services and their team on some important work in the Valley West, particularly bringing some sort of a youth or community center to that community, which has been requested and needed for several years. So I'll just start off with our Planning Division. And I'm going to kind of keep it to the highlights, but I don't want to go by without recognizing the ongoing work that we do for planning services on a daily basis, whether it's through, you know, review of building permits to ensure they comply with the code or processing planning permits. Joe Matier, our Senior Planner, is kind of a lead on that with assistance from Delo Freitas. And they do important work. So that is a major driver for revenue for that division in the fees that they get through those planning permits. And as you'll note on packet page 70 or budget page 62, whichever you're tracking by, the majority of the funding sources in that little pie chart in the upper left-hand corner, the 30-plus percent derives from planning fees, excuse me. In addition, I wanted to highlight that that team also serves as sort of an internal capacity for SEQA Services, California Environmental Quality Act Services. The projects that we do in other departments and divisions require SEQA review. We've really taken on a larger role in helping to partner and support the expertise that the other divisions have in SEQA to make sure that we're, you know, consistent across those objectives. For the long-range planning work that we're doing in the Planning Division, you know, I'm looking forward to submitting to the Coastal Commission our local coastal program this fiscal year. We've got funds that are dedicated to winding that out and then we're also going to be applying for a grant to help support that work, as well as the sea level rise planning work that's kind of part and parcel with the local coastal planning, but also goes into other planning areas as well. Again, excited about the partnership that we have with Environmental Services. Emily knows a lot about this topic and I'm excited to work with her on that, as well as the regional collaboration that we've sort of evolved over the course of the climate action planning work that we've been doing. And then lastly, another major driver for revenue, not just for the Planning Division, but all of these revenues go into the General Fund and support other divisions that support this work, as well as the cannabis activity permits that we issue. Those commercial cannabis activity permits generate, you know, depending on the year, anywhere between $250,000, $300,000 or so that's used to, you know, process those permits and really supports the staff that are involved in doing that work. And then lastly, in the Planning Division that I wanted to focus on is that, you know, kind of towards the middle of the fiscal year, sometime around the beginning of the year to middle of next year, we'll really be looking to, you know, kick off the rezones that are identified in the general plan updates and the Gateway Area Plan, the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program work that we're doing, you know, separating out the planning work, the policy work from the actual rezones. And so our planning staff will be kicking that off in the middle of next fiscal year. Before I transition to sort of our other divisions, do you have any questions about the planning budget that we have here? I've kind of touched on the goals. I haven't really talked too much about specific budget details.
I don't know, maybe this is not a stupid question, but this commercial cannabis activity permits, since we reduced the cap, is that going to affect the budget at all since there won't be new commercial permits?
The, so I believe you're referring to reducing the cap on dispensaries, on the retail sales? Yeah, no, the majority of our permits are actually in distribution, processing, other activities, the vast majority are in those other activities. And right now, we don't, the limitation that we've been discussing to date anyway wouldn't reduce below the number of issued planning permits that we have for that activity. So it wouldn't even, it wouldn't actually produce a negative cash flow over our current C cap. Really what's been affecting our permit holders is the market price. This year's been rough on everyone. It's been really rough on cannabis, so.
Thanks.
Okay, Jen, did I, do we have anything else on planning that I missed?
No, I think that was covered it.
Okay. So I'll just kick off a few, switch over to packet page 74. We're looking at the projects for economic development. Housing and the Grants Program is how we've broken them down in this budget. So starting off super high level for the Economic Development Section, the overall goal is to really focus on this this coming fiscal year. The last two years, we have been running around putting out fires, little COVID fires here and there. And there was a sudden community need, there was a sudden community or state, you know, grant, we would go after the grant to try and provide for the need. We were racing around doing that like chickens with our heads cut off. And so we're really looking forward to, you know, focusing, concentrating our energies to really double down on our economic development programs. I think this is in particular important because the rates are going up, interest rates are going up, you know, the Fed is strengthening policies there. And whereas in the last several years, five to five years or so, it's been almost difficult for our programs to compete with the open market. Interest rates were low enough, the money was cheap enough on the open market that our programs weren't really needed. I believe our Community Development Block Grant Program in particular, which is intended to be gap financing, financing that businesses can't otherwise get, or if they did get them, they wouldn't pencil. I think that program will be a lot more important to the community and will do a lot better job of making sure that people know that it's out there. In addition, we have the former redevelopment properties, the Little Lake and Happy Valley properties, that right now are going through the process of trying to obtain compensation agreements. The council authorized us to negotiate for those. Once those compensation agreements are entered, then we'll have properties that we can then subdivide and use, sort of like we use the Alder Grove Industrial Park, creating small parcels that businesses could then buy and, you know, own a piece of Arcata and grow their businesses here. And so there's just a lot of things that are kind of coming together that will allow us to really concentrate energies in a tactical way that helps us to improve the conditions for businesses and for employees in Arcata. And that's kind of where we're proposing to shift our focus from updating the Economic Development Strategic Plan. This was typically a five-year plan that when we had redevelopment, we would update every five years to try and help implement the programs for the redevelopment agency. And when redevelopment was dissolved in 2012, we were about mid-cycle for our then Economic Development Strategic Plan. Many of those measures, many of those policies that are in that plan are still very relevant. There's a lot of good information in there that we can pick up and maybe dust off. But then concentrate our energies on having more of a targeted implementation tool. So we would use what we're proposing, and we'll bring this to your meeting on the 14th, your special meeting to approve the Community Development Block Grant applications, a proposal to have more of a targeted, industry-specific approach that looks at developing tools instead of creating a new study that says we ought to develop these tools. We'll actually take and develop the tools with this money that we can then use to partner with the property that we own, the, you know, the bond revenues that we're still holding on to from the agency, the synergy that we'll be developing as, you know, sites become rezoned and maybe businesses want to, you know, move and maybe, you know, purchase a piece of their own slice of Arcata. And so I'm really excited about the Economic Development Program upcoming. And we have, you know, along with that, these other plans for expansion of Food Works. Now, right now, there's nothing in the budget for Food Works in terms of expansion plans. We've got our operations and it's a great revenue generator for the city and it's a great business opportunity for folks in food business. But if funds come available, I just kind of want to, you know, plant the seed now that if funds become available to do the expansion, we have a couple of very specific and small-scale expansions that we think we can make to really improve the efficiency of that facility. And I'm hoping to lean on Deputy Director Dart to explain those and maybe then carry us through the rest of housing and grants.
Yeah, so we have a couple Food Works. Well, first of all, we have a full-time Food Works technician, which is amazing. He's been able to move a lot of our projects forward that we just really kind of didn't have time to do in the past, so it's fantastic to have him. We did have a vacant unit that had been, we do have a vacant unit currently that had been occupied. It's one of the largest units in the facility and it's not occupiable at this time in its current condition, just because it's, there was so much wear and tear on it that it's just, it's no longer in compliance. So one of the projects that we would like to at least propose or throw out there is splitting that unit into two, possibly three units that are smaller, that would then provide for two, up to two or three additional businesses. And a lot of times, our businesses actually will co-lease, so it could even be more than that potentially. But it would make that unit much more valuable to our facility. We do have a waitlist right now for units, so it'd be great to get that one rehabbed. That's just the first one. There's also an expansion project, which is separate than this, which has been something that's been on our plate for a long time. There's another area that's currently vacant that could be built. There's been a couple of different, I think, some plans that were developed back in the redevelopment days to do another mini kind of Food Works or warehouse or something related to food production in that area, which is a much larger project. The rehab would definitely be smaller. It would probably be, you know, 700, well, 75, I would say 50 to 75,000, maybe 100. I don't know, because I know costs are way more than what you think they are right now. And we're currently getting estimates on what that would cost. But anyway, that's our Food Works.
So you, I'm sorry. So there's a waiting list right now for people that want to use that commercial kitchen space?
Yep.
So after that initial output to get this all refurbished, it would probably.
It would be full immediately. I have people texting bothering me about when it's going to be available.
Yeah, no, I know. I see it all the time, you know? Where do I, where can I find a commercial kitchen?
Well, and we have people who are looking for, that are in really small spaces, because we have very small spaces up to this one, which is, I think, our largest space in the entire facility, because it has an extra room kind of off the side of its regular space, so it's really large. And so we have people that are in small units that are just outgrowing their capacity for that small unit. And it would be great if we could move them up into one of these larger units, because even if we split it, it would be larger than what some of our smaller ones are. And then refill, you know, fill the other ones with incoming businesses. And I think that we have enough capacity to do all of that.
Thanks.
Yeah. And then the only thing, David, as far as economic development, that I wanted to touch on still is I just wanted to throw out that Susan Deal McCarthy did a really great effort during COVID. And I just wanted to express appreciation for her work on economic development during that time, because she really did do a lot for our businesses and has really learned our business assistance programs and is continuing to work through that. So I just wanted to highlight her as well. And then for housing, the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program is definitely the largest body of work for our department. Everyone, all of our staff touches that body of work, so I anticipate that that will be continuing until it's complete. Also, we've been working on programs related to homeless and low income, so our tenant-based rental assistance program, which Gillan Martin was working on in her part-time capacity, has continued to work on in her full-time capacity now that she's our full-time Community Development Specialist. She's done a great job of getting that program rerunning. It's a very, very time-consuming and difficult program to run. And so just the efforts that she's put into that is fantastic, getting people enrolled. We do still have our Home Buyer Assistance Program. It's more limited, but that program is still there, so that's great to have that. We don't currently have any affordable housing projects that are in the works or that have been discussed yet, but we are seeking partnerships for continuing, looking, you know, looking at additional projects in the future. I think, David, unless there's anything else on housing, that kind of covers it, I think, for me. Any questions for us on any of the housing stuff? Okay. And then for grants, we're going to be closing out a lot of grants this fiscal year, which is happy news to my ears, but also means that we need to look at additional grants. So it's great to see the accomplishments. We'll be bringing those accomplishments to you in July and just talking about kind of what was done with some of the grants that we're going to be closing out. But we've got a Regional Early Action Planning Grant with the Humboldt County Association of Government, so that's going to be coming up. I know we've already brought the scoping hearing to you about the Community Development Block Grant for 2022, so those three different applications or activities that we're talking about. We are looking at a Regional Early Action Planning Grant Part Two, which I believe is an over-the-counter grant. I'm not sure the competitiveness of that yet, but we're looking at that. There's a local coastal program, round, I believe, three for Coastal Commission, so obviously we'll be looking at that so we can finish out our LCP. There's some potential for USDA housing grants, so we're going to be looking into that, an OPC grant. And then basically, we're always looking for funding to assist with anything in the city related to housing, community development, or any other thing that comes on our plate, because there's always other things. So yeah, there'll be more grant opportunities in the future, but those are the main ones, I think, right now. Any questions on grants?
No, thank you so much. Is that all for your?
I think that's all we have, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
We're not, we're not going to beg for more.
Was it something I said? I mean, the room cleared out as soon as I started talking.
They all, they heard you talking and left.
You said.
You said high level, you said high level six times, so they're all going to. to go.
Go for, yeah, moving straight through your book.
Okay, well, I'm going to try to keep the momentum going here and be efficient. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Police Department budget is really consisting of public safety, parking, and animal control. A pretty straightforward budget this year, very consistent with years past, although it's nice to see an incremental restoration of some of our programs to help us rebuild as the city rebuilds. That's provided that you approved the budget, so. Want to thank the city manager and Andrea and Leah Brazil, our police business manager, for getting us to this point. So it's a lot of work. So even though this budget's fairly consistent with previous budgets, what is unique is the restoration of one police officer position. That's huge for us right now, even though we're still at a few vacancies. Any, any opportunity to bring somebody new on board is is really huge. We still have two dispatcher vacancies as well, but we've done a recent round of interviews, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to get to into backgrounds. What's also unique about this budget is that, you know, we are staffing an acting sergeant outreach position through ARPA funds. That position will also coordinate all of the social services that are coming on board, including the Community Ambassador Program as well. We really feel like that's a game-changer position, because we have to do things to try to move people further down the service pipeline. It's no longer acceptable for us for them to simply say they're not interested in services. We want to work with them shoulder to shoulder to actually illustrate to them what actually is available. And even if that day they're not ready, perhaps a month or six months later, as we continue that relationship building, they'll be ready. We've been very intentional this fiscal year with trying to boost as best we can our recruitment funding, which includes a lot more local community events, where we will pay for a table to be there, pay for a booth, have uniformed officer there to recruit. And then we also need to take our show on the road, quite frankly, to try to recruit from other areas of Humboldt County, other areas of California. So that is going to come with a cost, but, you know, we'll, we'll, what we're going to do is is utilize some salary savings from these existing ongoing vacant positions to fund that. But we we are grateful to have a little bit more money to to try to recruit and then also to retain, to try to really work with our current staff to find, you know, cost-effective ways to reward them, you know, for the outstanding work that they're doing. We've asked for additional monies also to cover the, what we're hoping for, our additional backgrounding and onboarding costs for hopefully some new hires. We've also been, and this is the first time that I've seen it, and again, I think it's a testament to all of you and to our city manager and the goals of this city, and that is, we're now actually proactively funding our juvenile diversion program. Before, you know, we had to find monies from other places within the police budget or look to, you know, grants, which we'll continue to do. But I think that sends a huge message to our, to our city that our, we care about our kids and our families, and we're, we're funding programs that we know will help them in their family environment. And then lastly, you know, capital improvement program is a radio replacement program, comes with a huge cost, as you know. But that, obviously, it's very difficult to deliver city services, because it's not just the police department that utilizes radios, but other departments as well, without the ability to communicate. And I think because of our, our, our location and being so close to, you know, salt air and the fact that our existing system has been in place for so long and the weather, you know, can be rugged, can be very demanding on electronic equipment. It's, 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 we're hoping, you know, to get that project across the finish line and really improve the ability for folks to communicate throughout the city, so. And, you know, lastly, as, as hard as everyone works, you know, to really identify what we believe are going to be the costs, we really are an incident-driven cost machine sometimes. So for this upcoming fiscal year, we're hoping for fewer incidents, which means fewer money spent, so. With that, I'll see if you have any questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Maybe not for this year, but the feasibility of down the road, I've heard mentioned in the past to talks of there being a satellite station in Valley West, is that something that has any feasibility?
Well, it has feasibility, ma'am, and, but, but obviously, there's a cost to that. And we have, we've, we've talked to several businesses and civic groups in the area, hoping to maybe see if there was some property that perhaps could be donated for that use. One in particular that we made a lot of progress with, unfortunately, the building is constructed in a way that we can't communicate if we're inside. We can't communicate outside. That, that's a game, we can't, can't go in there. The other thing that I think is important for me, as, I think it's a great idea, and we want to accomplish it, but I have to message to the community that that is not your police officer. That police officer still can respond anywhere in the city, and also, don't expect, the goal is for not that officer to just sit in there and wait for people to come and ask questions. They can use the facility, they can communicate on a computer, finish reports, and we want community members to stop by and ask questions and inquire, but that officer may only be there for, you know, certain segments of the day because of all the other responsibilities that they have. So I have to make sure that people understand that it will be staffed as often as we possibly can, so. But 24/7, because we, we never sleep, so.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Any other, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just, I'm sorry. Can you tell me a little bit more about the outreach sergeant and like what his day looks like?
Yeah, well, it's, I appreciate you asking that. We're really trying, you know, we're not creating anything new. We're trying to model this program based upon what's worked in other municipalities throughout California of any size. But clearly, what we're doing here in the police department, we have to, we got to try different strategies. So this sergeant is basically going to do a number of things. First of all, they are going to be the point person with community members and, and trying to direct them to services. A big part of that is developing relationships with all of our social service providers throughout Humboldt County. It's easy to say, well, just refer them to DHHS, but what, what, what does that mean? So this position, and it's Acting Sergeant Luke Scow, who is a Southern Humboldt native, who has a family lineage of public safety here in Humboldt County. His grandfather was, is a retired Humboldt County Superior Court Judge. Luke brings a ton of credibility that I don't bring, because I'm not from here. It's very possible that Luke will walk into an office to learn more about what this social service agency provides and actually know the people who are working there. So everybody is maxed out, all these groups, everyone has so much more work to do than that their, than their capacity helps or allows them to. So we're hoping that if we, if we demonstrate the commitment to work alongside them and try to move some of our most vulnerable people here in Arcata further down the service pipeline, getting them further closer to housing, closer to a meal, closer to mental health services, that's going to be our point person for that. They're also going to actually coordinate and supervise the Community Ambassador Program. That will include training, or actually recruiting, working with Danette and her staff on recruiting, training, and then checking in with them at the end of every shift. How's things going? What did you learn? Do you feel safe out there? What can we do to, to, to make your, your position more comfortable? And then wrapping the MIST program that we have as well. Even though they're still DHHS clinicians, we feel that with Luke and his leadership, he'll be able to bring MIST more closely to all the other elements that we have within the police department, to really have sort of this duality in terms of response versus going out individually. And then lastly, I'm asking Luke to develop our short, mid, and long-term strategic plan for how we're going to address homelessness. We just saw it again with 1600 Samoa Boulevard. That was after the Transit Center and Health Sport. And then, as many of you know, if not all of you, they, these, these folks went elsewhere, and we, literally, within 12 hours, we started to get complaints from other property owners. In my opinion, that is not sustainable. I have to be able to make recommendations to the city manager and to all of you. From Luke's perspective, is to, what can we do more holistically and maybe with more of a permanency to it, so that not, we're not just chasing this group from one location to another? It's a big lift, but I'm asking Luke to take that on, so.
Thank you, Chief. You and your team are very much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So we have high hopes for Luke. And, and to save money, everybody in Arcata needs to be on the best behavior.
Yes, please.
All right, so we got that, okay.
Got it.
So I had just two different questions. One, for, for the vacant officer positions, do, are those funded positions that we're still trying to fill, or?
Well, you know, the council's been really supportive, and, and we've had to make some very difficult decisions since COVID. But the assurances that, that I think are still there is that we're going, why fund the police department fully at 27 sworn positions if we're only at 23 right now? Let's use that money for other, for those other positions for other services, really important services. But as we identify people who we want to bring on board, the city manager has asked me to go back to her to, to revisit where we're at on vacancies, what's the budgeted number, and then, you know, we would then come to you for permission to perhaps fund it, depending on where you're at citywide overall on the budget. We may have to hold on some of those candidates. But, but that's the plan, is to sort of look at it in the, in the immediacy of it. But we all, quite frankly, we have three vacancies right now. Unfortunately, Jamal Jones, you know, we're losing Jamal, great cop, great football coach at Arcata High School, but he's going to, you know, another opportunity in Oregon. We're happy for Jamal and his family. It does create another opening for us to bring somebody else on board. So we have vacancies to fill before I, I come back to you asking for more money, so we've got some, some time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because even, you know, even if we don't have like a satellite office in Valley West, if we have more officers on the street, we can, you know, have more coverage. And also, you know, I've been saying this, but I'm just really excited someday to be able to have the officer on the bike back. In the meantime, maybe you'll loan the bikes to the Community Ambassador Program, I'm hoping, but we would like to also have an officer on the bike, too.
No doubt. Yeah, and as we see all the trails coming online now and we become more of that destination, what I anticipate, you know, and this is obviously way down the road, is to have a trail team, so we can get back into the community forest with park rangers. The community is demanding that I get more resources out at the marsh, and, and that is the goal. Get on the plaza. And then as we, as we open up and develop the Annie and Mary Trail, I think there's going to be an expectation that there's some uniform presence out there. Bike officers is, is a great way to do that, to your point. So that, that's the goal, but it's going to take us a while to get there.
Okay. And for the radio infrastructure, that came before us last time, I think, but we weren't able to fund it, is that correct?
We had it in the initial ARPA review, and we didn't fund it at that time, staff and really under Dylan's leadership, so I don't know. If we want to talk radios now, we can, or we can wait until IT, but I'm happy to pull up.
Well, I was just wondering, because the chief mentioned it, and I, I don't think it's in the regular budget, but that's something at the end in our ARPA funds, is that correct?
I do have, unallocation in the ARPA funds, and then I have a strategy to fund the rest that I want to go over with you tonight, that then will be included and potentially in an action on the 22nd. And I'm happy to break and do that now.
That's fine, we can do it whenever.
Okay, we'll do it when we get to Dylan's budget. Okay.
Thank you.
I guess that did actually prompt my last question, because I thought when you first asked, because I see on here, under capital, that's ARPA-funded, it's like the last line of the, the police section of the budget. Is that part of the radio funding, or is that, what would that be?
That's like the 164,000, I think, is that what?
It's like 225.
I, I think that is allocated toward the radio project.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, I answered my own question.
Yeah, so Meredith said the, the secret term. So any time you see a 224, that starts in account number, that is ARPA-funded. That is an exclusive ARPA fund, 224, if it starts in 224. Yeah, so that is that placeholder there. And as you go through your budget tonight, then we'll finalize things before it comes back to, of course, on the 22nd. All right, any more questions for police?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to your old packet page 70C, I'm building and engineering. Our city engineer, Nate Katri, is away this evening, so I'm going to open it. We also have our assistant city engineer, David Case, here that can answer specific questions about projects. The exciting thing really about building and engineering is that, well, I shouldn't say that, they're almost back at full staff. Like, a week ago, I could have said they're at full staff, but they'll be close to getting back to full staff. But this is really the first time in at least my tenure as city manager that we have a building official, a building inspector, and somebody actively working on code compliance. And already, my email is filled, much more filled, with happy emails than it has ever been around code compliance. And so that continues in, in this next year's budget. From the building side, really, the big lift for them is implementing the online building software, the building permit software, and they're actively working on that as we speak, but it will really launch in the next fiscal year. Allocating that time for additional code enforcement and really looking at the, the high-volume complaint nuisance properties to start with in conjunction with the police department and with environmental services, working through those. And then finalizing the city's, woo, light. I have some energy efficiency measures, we got to just pull back a little bit. Finalizing some recommendations on the rental inspection program will be coming forward to you likely in July. One of the council's priority areas is around increasing pedestrian bicycle safety, so heavy emphasis on the local road safety program in this next fiscal year. And then designing for those improvements for 8th and 9th Street that came out of the public, the task force for plaza improvements. And then beginning the preliminary designs through grant funding for Sunset and L.K. Wood intersection and trying to improve pedestrian bicycle safety crossing that intersection. And then, of course, finalizing the plans and specs for the older Keta Road improvements. Overall, engineering, you know, we'll talk about them in every other department, because they support every capital improvement program, whether it's in the police department or environmental services or community development departments as well. So they, they touch on all of those, and certainly, David's here if you have any specific questions about projects this year. But if not, we're just happy to report that they really are at, staffed at a level. And the reason that you see these projects getting out the door and heavy, heavy bidding right now is because of that staffing level in that department right now and their leadership, so.
I just wanted to ask a quick question about the rental inspection program and just kind of, I mean, I guess what the, the status of that is, because I know it's been kind of tabled for a while, and then the hope that there would be a working group kind of surrounding that, and so, I don't know, just like a super high-level overview of, I mean, where that is sitting right now would be awesome.
Great. Well, good evening, council members. I had been assisting the Building Division and Engineering Department with facilitation of the Residential Rental Inspection Program Working Group, and that working group had diverse representation across, you know, property owners, property management, and renters, and met, I think, five times, and really worked with the Building Division to give a lot of input on the ordinance as it was, and also with a lot of collaboration with the Fire Department to ensure that inspection programs that the city would be implementing would be complement what the Fire Department is mandated for larger, you know, above three units. And so we had a public meeting about two weeks ago that I think had about two weeks ago that I think had two dozen people that attended. And so I think their, their plans are to come back with updated ordinance later this, this summer.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
All right. So we're going to head back to Emily and Environmental Services. And you can probably take in whatever order you'd like to.
Great. Well, thank you again for this opportunity to share about all the great work that our large department is working on. So Environmental Services really provides the essential services within the city for making sure people can get to where they need to go safely, have, have a safe drinking water, making sure that our community can conserve our habitat and resource lands, making sure we have safe and enriching places to play, and also really continue to plan for climate adaptation goals. So first, just for our kind of streets and fleets section, you know, we have several activity budgets that are really focused on operations and maintenance of our over 120 miles of streets plus active transportation network in the city. As well as maintaining our fleet, we have two highly skilled mechanics that maintain dozens of vehicles and use a lot of creative means to keep those running and under compliance for our, all of our air quality needs. And, and we, we have a really strong team there. We currently are nearly back up to full capacity. We have three maintenance workers positions currently vacant and hiring for right now in streets and utilities. But the team is working, working well together. We have an in-house paving program that is, you know, always continuing and is in full swing this summer. For our streets projects, really, you know, we'll be following their complete streets resolution, and some of the key focus for our streets projects, which again, Environmental Services works hand-in-hand with engineering for designing those projects, getting those projects out to bid. But those kind of key focus areas include the north end of West End Road, Boyd Road, and H Street, as well as kind of some upcoming, you know, projects on 10th and Samoa Boulevard. So really, again, trying to focus on largest needs for pavement management and complete streets needs. For our active transportation network, our, our largest project is continuing the Arcata Annie and Mary Trail. We are currently in the environmental documentation and preliminary design phase, and again, have funding through construction. We are, hope to bring that environmental document to you early in this next fiscal year. For, you know, other active transportation projects, again, with engineering being some, some key walking and biking improvements to support the new sorrel place through, again, with the grant with community development. So there's always a lot of collaboration across departments, especially for grants. You know, other key aspects are installing new bike share stations and maintaining our, you know, current stations with Calpoli Humboldt. And then our regular annual sidewalk maintenance program, and a key focus this year of hoping to work on the west side of the plaza, and replacement of those street trees, and ensuring, you know, safe accessibility on the west side of the plaza to access our many events and businesses. Any kind of questions on streets and fleets? Would then love to, I guess, just turning the page and heading to kind of our natural resources and sustainability programs. You know, so again, for our natural resources, our small crew maintains, you know, thousands of acres, 2,400 acres of forest land, you know, with three separate tracts, as well as a lot of our, you know, resource lands and Arcata Marsh. And really, as the chief noted of, we have a, you know, real focus of ensuring, you know, safety and, and proper use of, of the marsh. And we know that is of, of big interest for the community. For, you know, Arcata has really been a leader in sustainability programs. So kind of continuing those efforts. But really, our, our largest, you know, effort and lift this year will be for the state mandate for organics recycling. So we'll be certainly coming back, you know, to you with, with those next steps for implementation, as well as next steps with the county and with our, you know, other jurisdictions for the Climate Action Plan. The other, you know, key sustainability priority this year is for the all-electric initiative. And so one of those key steps being working with, with the Energy Committee on new ordinance to phase out natural gas for new construction. And so we anticipate coming to you with that later this year, and still working through the committee on, on that process. Also, just lots of projects. So for forest management, we have a draft forest management plan and are really anticipating finalizing that and bringing that for, for your consideration by the end of 2022, and completing our SEQA analysis for that as well. We are really actively seeking grant funds and other planning for continuing to focus on sea-levelerized adaptation, again, in partnership with community development. And are actively seeking, you know, funds currently for land acquisition that can assist with those strategies that are really being outlined in the local coastal program draft that you have been, you know, learning about and a part of. For other, you know, priorities, again, this is, we had the passage of Measure A, the open space parks and trails ballot measure that passed in 2020. And we're really excited to complete the Arcata Ridge Trail and Fickle Hill Crossing, of that being a community priority for many years. So that has been a, you know, priority for, for Measure A. And also for, for this year, also working on improvements to the Margaret Lane Trailhead in Sunnybury for, especially for equestrian access, but for improved access with a ramp up into the trails for all, all trail users.
Before we head off of Measure A, just to kind of, we maybe should remind the council. So part of that measure was to have some oversight. And so we did put together, there is a subcommittee of the natural resources committees that does review and make recommendations that then come into the budget. So maybe if you want to talk about that process a little bit.
Yep. Great. So that ballot measure passed with that there would be citizen oversight of the open space parks, trails measure. And we were, you know, looking at, we have a lot of city committees, and we have a lot of expertise in those areas on current city committees, you know, those being the Forest Management Committee, Parks and Rec Committee, and Wetlands and Creeks. So we brought, you know, this idea to those three committees to form an ad hoc group to work together to really talk about and determine priorities for the funding for open space parks and trails, and also work across committees more, more often. And I know we received the, you know, positive feedback from the council committee budget, or planning session we had a couple of weeks ago. But this ad hoc group, I think, really brought cross-understanding of priorities amongst those more kind of resource and parks and rec-related committees. And those committees outlined a process for staff to come back each, each year and detail how expenditures of Measure A were, were spent, maybe what, you know, was not spent, be able to relate council goals to that, to those committees, so that then they could recommend, you know, best kind of highest use, highest priorities for those funding. And that ad hoc group came up with a process of kind of thinking about the funding in three separate buckets. One being for acquisition of new open space lands that, you know, can assist with city goals, for stewardship of current, current properties and maintenance, and then for improving access, public access. And so those, in those buckets, they fund, they recommended the department to put into the budget for your consideration several projects. One of those being that the Margaret Lane Trailhead access improvements, a trail, alternative to Trail 9, which is the kind of only trail that hits Fickle Hill Road, which is a very popular destination. And we have a, that's probably the area we, we receive the most concern about high speeds of bicyclists coming back to the, to the trailhead. So we're recommending a alternative to Trail 9 to split traffic and provide kind of just more space and, and options for recreation. As well as improvements to Bloomfield Park, which, you know, can talk about in a bit, or with parks. But Bloomfield Park had equipment removed during, you know, during 2020, but it was also just a very aging park infrastructure. We had a really great community neighborhood meeting with neighbors around, you know, that option recently. And then the other components related to our, you know, natural resource program is continuing, you know, monitoring and potential projects in, on Janes Creek. And that is where there's a lot of habitat restoration opportunities, but also a lot of flood control opportunities with businesses and residents on the west, northwest side of West End Road there. So quick summary for, maybe not too quick, but hopefully thorough. So any kind of questions so far, especially on, you know, natural resource sustainability programs within the department?
You do a lot of things, Emily.
We, we, we do. And luckily, we have a really great team that carries out a lot of good projects. Let's see. I'm going to move on to parks and facilities, since we've been talking more, you know, that way. You know, so I know I've, I've been with the city for just a bit over a year, but I think one of our greatest accomplishments was really getting back up to more full staff. And so our parks and facilities and natural resource crew have really been able to get our level of service, you know, back to really near pre-pandemic levels. We have seen really big increases in facility rentals, and that's really exciting. Families and communities are getting together. Many more kinsenehres happening. And it's, it's exciting to see our recreation staff are very, you know, very busy with those rentals. And we have the, we have the staff to really be able to make it happen. Continuing on just with facilities, we have a big focus in the budget around decarbonization and fuel switching, facility upgrades, particularly at the community center. And also installing battery backup units, systems at several facilities, including City Hall. And I also advancing a potential rebate program for, you know, reducing cost for fuel switching for low-income households. That's one that we're interested to, again, collaborate with other departments and other organizations doing that work to see how we can have the biggest impact. For, for parks, our top priority really remains improvements at Carlson Park. We are very, you know, excited to be awarded a grant from the Wildlife Conservation Board. Once we have a signed grant agreement, that will become part of the budget. We had another site visit with another prospective grant this morning. So really excited about that momentum and working with the Valley West community. We will continue to be working on improvements to Shea Park. And there'll be some exciting more adult fitness equipment installed, hopefully, or later this summer. And that work is currently out to bid. Another priority remains the renovation of Redwood Park. And we, you know, have funding from two funding sources, the infill and infrastructure grant program and a state parks grant. We also want to ensure that it's a, you know, top regional, you know, park, and really wanting to make sure we have enough funding to see it through in a really thorough way. So we also have a, you know, another suggestion for if we need additional funds to be able to utilize ARPA funding, since it really is a destination in our community. You know, our parks, we've also really focused, heard a lot of a need for new scoreboard at the softball fields. So that's just one item of just wanting to note and mention. And again, our parks group is very excited to continue with beautification of the downtown.
Yes. Anything about a dog park in there? Am I jumping the gun?
Yeah. So I think dog park outreach continues. I think there is, you know, and we had, you know, you had, your council had really given feedback that a couple of potential sites could potentially be Little Lakes in the future, if that, you know, if cleanup continues, and if that works with kind of the, you know, planned development, as well as potentially for Stewart Park and D Street Linear Park. So those are on our, the department's radar for continued outreach. And I, I think that will still take a, a bit more time to further, further develop. Just really want to, again, plug our, our recreation division is continuing to offer, camps are coming right up with school letting out. And so just amazing, high-quality level of, of work for, you know, opportunities for families after school ends. And we're excited to bring back youth sports programming this, this winter. So that will be another, another key thing. And continuing the Arcata Play Center, which has seen huge, huge involvement from families, and also accolades across the county for being able to adapt to programming in the, in the pandemic. Any other questions before I kind of switch to quickly talk on water and wastewater systems? Again, thanks for your patience for covering a large.
Yeah, I'm thinking if it's okay, if we just maybe take a five-minute break, because then I don't want, you know, us to rush through the rest, because we're squirrely. So let's all just stretch our legs and do what we got to do, and be back here at 8:15. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, welcome back. And so we are continuing on with a report from Environmental Services.
Great. So we'll touch on our water and wastewater services. You know, again, our utility crew covers a lot of ground with 77 miles of water distribution lines and, you know, all of that infrastructure. And so constantly responding to calls for services as well as then working with our engineering department to develop kind of key projects to advance our infrastructure planning and security. You know, key projects this year on the water side, we're touched on by city manager and finance manager. But again, the Tank One C project will provide, you know, 20% more of our water storage for the city. So really planning for contingencies and emergency needs, as well as advancing the water line replacement project. So those are, you know, continued capital improvement projects that we want to keep, keep advancing to cover even more lengths of water line in, in the city. For our wastewater side, you know, again, the wastewater treatment plant, just the phase one will be the, you know, probably the largest infrastructure project the city has undertaken. And that work is currently out, out to bid and will be coming back to you later, you know, in, in August. And as we are planning for the wastewater treatment, you know, plant upgrade, we've been planning of just of what is stored and what is going on with the corp yard. So we've been doing a lot of shifting things around. Part of our, you know, planning is also planning for moving our natural resource shop and components of the police department from the corp yard to where the parks building is located, as well as just planning for infrastructure and, and storage of other materials at, at the corp yard. So we've been very busy getting ready for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. Again, what will continue to assist our wastewater system is reducing the amount of wet weather flow that comes in through infill infiltration. So again, working with engineering to advance a next project that will really assist with our wastewater collection system. And, and one, one thing that is mentioned kind of in the, the budget notes is just continuing from the environmental services staffing transitions from, you know, a year and a half ago, having quite a number of leadership staffing transitions. And so we've really been doing planning on how can we, you know, best meet our certification needs for water and wastewater and redundancies for those certifications into the future. And so we're planning or have proposed in the budget shifting our water or wastewater certifications from our deputy of utilities, Streets and Utilities, who has an imminent retirement and shifting that to our, our current role of environmental compliance officer. And that position is really essential for keeping up with all of our water quality compliance needs on the wastewater side and water side, and really working hand in hand with our lead plant operator for the treatment plant. And so those proposed changes are, are within our suggestions in the budget for personnel services. So I think I can wrap up there.
I will say that I really, really enjoyed that tour of the wastewater treatment plant. I think that I would not, none of this would have made sense to me if I hadn't like been there and seen it. I'll never be able to look at corn the same way again. But, but no, I mean, thank you for that tour because, sorry, it's, it's getting late. But yes, thank you for that.
Yeah. And our intention really was to help, there is a lot, you know, going on at, at the treatment facility day to day, let alone with a really large planned infrastructure upgrade. So we really wanted to provide the council with that, that background on, on functioning and planning. And then we are, the department's looking forward to share, sharing in more detail just our water and wastewater infrastructure planning at your meeting later this month, and also with the planning commission next week. Thanks.
Yeah, it makes me feel a lot better about our wastewater treatment plant to have like been there and seen that and heard from all the experts that work there, like what's exactly going on. So thank you.
I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. So getting you to your packet page 91, looking at technology capabilities. Taking up our IT manager, probably the most significant aspect of this, of this suite of activities is it does include, oh, came from the wrong side. Okay. Always keeping me on my toes, is that we are looking at the one full-time position addition to the city this year would be an IT technician. And it will start to build out our IT division. So, you know, under our IT manager, and we've talked about this in the past of, of one, it will put the technician under that, our communications specialist, part-time position. And then it will also bring in sort of the auditing and overall supervisory role of our technology systems also within our water and wastewater system. So we do have a individual position that manages sort of the communications between their, our water tanks and our control room and our pumps and motors that are out within our wastewater system, moving, you know, material down to the wastewater treatment plant. But from a, from an auditing and a testing and an oversight and long-term planning would fall then under this IT division build out that's included in your budget, in that IT position. But I wanted Dylan to talk about a couple of things, just any other kind of system changes around IT that are proposed for next year. And then in particular, the work that he's done on the radio project to kind of replace the radio system.
Thank you, mayor and council members for your time this evening. So to start off on really a high level overview, being a department of one, it makes things a little bit difficult at times to be readily available to jump on fires as they come up or just a lot of the day-to-day issues as they build up and make the backlog of tickets quite large. But we have sustained that over the last 12 years with the intent of eventually being able to grow into a slightly larger department. With the addition of one full-time position, this will allow support for not only my position, but also the aforementioned position down at the wastewater treatment plant with the SCADA manager that's there, creating a little bit more redundancy, backup, someone else to help facilitate being on call off and on, or just helping hands during major projects and implementations. We've relied in the past on contractors as we can, but somebody that has institutional knowledge and can be here at a moment's notice or pull from another job is, you know, our preferred method. And so we're super excited to hopefully have that make it through the budget this year and start to evolve to the next version of the IT department. In relation to the radio project that the police chief had mentioned earlier, we have been in good faith negotiations after the bidding process brought forth one proposal, Day Wireless, who has been our current radio infrastructure maintenance company and has handled a lot of the maintenance around the county for the majority of the, of the districts, cities and other police departments and agencies. They brought us a proposal based on, you know, the RFP that worked, but had a lot of long-term costs associated with it. And even though the project is, you know, a little over a million dollars, we spent a lot of time reworking that entire proposal with them to ultimately come up with a plan that is not just a slight replacement and upgrade to what we have, which is a very old and antiquated unsupported system and actually a full nut and bolt wired down to the nitty-gritty replacement of our entire radio infrastructure for public safety. And the result was really only about a net increase of about $50,000 over the original proposal. The other nice thing about that is that we've designed a system now that provides better transmission and redundancy over the three communication sites that we have, which is City Hall, the corporation yard, and the water tank up on Hewitt in the McKinleyville Community Services District. In the past, those transmission sites have been problematic for us because they act as kind of like a relay. So they have to take the signal that comes from City Hall or currently the BSS building up at HSU, and they kind of take that and amplify what comes off there. This system would actually make it a three transmit site. So each of those locations would get a full signal backhaul and transmit fully from that site, which should increase, you know, a 20 to 30% coverage in a lot of our trouble areas, especially Valley West and the Bayside area around Sunnybury. So we're super excited for the potential of, you know, better coverage, better reliability. You know, as the chief alluded to earlier, problems like even walking into a building in Valley West and suddenly you can't hear anything on your radio, let alone get a cell phone signal sometimes. This should help, you know, better, I'm trying to think of the right word for, huh?
Close that gap.
Close that gap. Thanks, chief. In a lot of those areas, while again, providing us with brand new, fully supported equipment. I can tell you right now that we have a piece of equipment downstairs that is thankfully, we were able to borrow from Eureka because they had recently done their upgrade, which is our main transmitting component, which is also on its last leg and turns on a fan that's very loud every few minutes. The officers will be very excited to get rid of that. But also providing the officers with new state-of-the-art equipment. You know, one of the things that, as a small city, I've been super proud to be able to do as IT, has worked closely with the police department to always make sure that we are doing the best we can to be on the technology forefront for our officers. And it's a big testament to the administration that's currently there and of years past, looking forward towards in-car cameras, body worn cameras, radio infrastructure for their dispatch, newer computers, you know, staying current on software. The police department has always worked very hard to be the best they can for even being the small city. And in some ways, we're leaps and bounds ahead of many other larger cities in our area. So if there's any other questions about the radio system, I'd be happy to answer those.
Was, it was like the 200,000 that's in the categories in the ARPA funding, is that like the down payment for the system? And then we're, how's that work?
So since Dylan's here, I'm not sure if you'll be able to see.
I haven't worked that magic out yet. Yes, if I had the full-time person, I would have them push the button right now.
So it's really clear on my screen and maybe for other Zoom watchers. So the whole project is, as Dylan said, a little bit over a million dollars. You have in our current fiscal year budget that we're in right now, about 161,000, which was drug task force asset forfeiture dollars that had come in in previous years. We see in front of you a request to fund 225,000 out of the ARPA funds. The police department has what's called supplemental law enforcement services grant, and the finance director felt comfortable pulling $200,000 out of that to fund instantly. And then we would be in essence financing the remainder. But my request to the council would be, we are looking at where we can attain cost savings in our, again, our current fiscal year. And for whatever cost savings we can of that, I think that I can pretty much guarantee we would end this fiscal year with an additional 300,000 that we could pay down on that system. But what I'd be asking for is we'll probably have a range of somewhere between 400 and 550,000 left that we would be financing, but that that would be the first priority payoff with any savings that we have from this current fiscal year. And then whatever we don't, we will go ahead and finance and we will continue to look for grant funds. And we do receive that supplemental law enforcement services grant every year. So we would be looking at at least incremental of 30 to 40,000 dollar payments from that grant cycle to pay off the remainder. So that's sort of the, the plan to try to fund this radio replacement. As Dylan has shared with me, the prices of this type of technology are going up daily. So we do hope to probably bring that award of bid to you with the budget at that meeting, just to lock in those prices at least, even though we'll be implementing slowly over the course of the fiscal year.
And it's important to note that, you know, obviously doing our fiduciary duty as well, that we worked really hard with both the vendor and some other contract sources that we were able to locate to net roughly a 27% savings on a lot of the costs. So again, like I said, even though there is an increase from what the initial proposal was, we're getting all the way down to every nut and bolt, brand new everything. Because of those savings, we were able to find on a lot of the other equipment through sourcing contracts and et cetera. So it is a big number, but it's important towards the long-term goal of providing the services that are vastly needed by our police department. And eventually other departments such as parks and environmental services, all the different divisions for our long-term goals over emergency management and our infrastructure, should there be a cellular outage and stuff, which we've obviously come to rely upon very heavily. But having that backup radio infrastructure again, or something that's compatible with the police system, even if on a smaller scale, something that can jump, quickly jump in and provide us to stay online with each other as we work through whatever that potential emergency mitigation is.
So that's what we have for IT.
And thank you for the clever demonstration of why we need. That was.
I'm going to plan it.
No other questions?
No, but just thank you. Being an ID department of one, I don't know, like.
Our motto for 12 years has been, I'm it. So it's the, it's always our, you know, I dream big. There will one day be many of, of others with us. Thank you.
Okay, moving to public transportation, I'll just keep it brief. I think the most exciting thing is that we should take possession of two electric buses this year. So that, it really was in our budget for this fiscal year, but will be delivered in next fiscal year with supply chain schedules the way they are. Still looking to secure funding for free bus service in the summer. So we are under free service right now for June and July. We are looking at installing an emergency backup generator also at our transit center to complete, you know, to kind of support during emergency operations as well. So I mean, those are kind of the highlights. We are also.
We are also working, we talked a little bit about this in our committee chairs' study session with Cal Poly on the expansion that they will need ultimately for transit systems and bus service, and the city also has talked for a long time about needs of some of our employment centers around bus systems. So, we're going to work closely with Cal Poly this year to at least try to identify some funding to do that analysis work and hope to bring that back to at some point in the fiscal year. So, any questions about transit? David might also be able to help a little bit, but we should be able to answer if you have them. If not, I think what we really have to cover is, you know, kind of general administration, which there isn't a whole lot to report on. Maybe Jeanette has a couple of things, and then just kind of cover the ARPA programs associated with that.
All right, thank you. Yes, generally, we try to be fairly brief on this. We, the City Managers' Office Department, it tends to be, most of, we do have several divisions, and most of them are a person of one or one and a half, and we do tend to be what I would term internal service functions for the most part. So, I think you're all aware, but just to kind of recap, we have within the City Managers' Office our City Clerk Division. So, a big part of what we have happening this coming year is we do have an election that our City Clerk and Deputy City Clerk, Bridget Dory and Kayla Johnson, will be coordinating and managing as well as a ballot measure. They always have lots of public records requests that they're processing, and also, as you're aware, manage and coordinate all of the, they're basically the historians as far as council meeting packets, minutes, ordinances, resolutions. So, we continue to be busy supporting our departments and the council and all of that. We also have our Personnel Division, Cynthia Coronado Brown and Kristi Sino. So, that obviously is your benefits administration, your recruitment, employee support, employee contract negotiations, workers' comp, all of that good stuff. Also, we have Contracts Manager Danielle Alred, who does a splendid and wonderful job in supporting our departments with a lot of our bids and contracts agreements, and also is critical in all of the risk management aspects of those with our insurance aspects. And then, I know you already heard about IT, which is part of the City Managers' Department as well, but I also just want to take the opportunity to really give a shout-out to Dylan, and I think it is really clear that we are expanding just the nature of how things have grown over the last several years with the requirements for security and network, as well as the deployment of several cellphones, iPads, as far as how we're functioning in our crews, all of the items that were listed in the Police Department that he has almost single-handedly been managing. So, there is a true need, and I do want to say, City Manager Deemer mentioned earlier that we recently, actually last July, merged on our liability, general liability and workers' comp pool, and it quickly, their Risk Manager that has been going to each of the members to assess things, has quickly honed onto Dylan's expertise, and again, the aspects that we have in Little Arcata, and he has become, and Arcata has become a large go-to for some of the items that they're looking at doing and being standards for the entire pool. So, I think that is an overview. We obviously, we have City Attorney under our department as well, and that is a contract attorney, but definitely work closely in things with her. And then, I think the only other item under that is Finance, which would be Andrea. Thank you.
She's unmuted herself.
Hello, I just have a couple of points for our Finance Department. We don't have much on packet page 64, but I wanted to point out that we are responsible for City's financial accounting and reporting functions. I have included dollars in our budget for next fiscal year. At our last council meeting, a part-time accounting technician position was created and approved, so thank you for that. That will help with some of our day-to-day accounting functions. I also wanted to say that I look forward to our full-cycle utility billing, going back to full-cycle utility billing in July. So, as you know, we'll be resuming lock-offs for utility billing. We actually have a shorter collection cycle for our water and wastewater revenues going into the next fiscal year, and I'm looking forward to full staffing. We recently hired two finance specialist positions on to fulfill vacancies, and we have a future pending vacancy for our Finance Manager. So, just looking forward for our department to be fully staffed and to keep things running smoothly from an accounting and finance perspective. One of the items I wanted to call to your attention on packet page 63, one of the priority projects or council goals under Activity 1 and 3 is to identify an ongoing funding stream, such as sales tax, parcel tax, TOT, and Prepare Ballot Initiative aimed at homelessness reduction strategies for voters to consider in 2024. What I wanted to bring to your attention as we talk about ARPA and the American Rescue Plan Act funding is that this fiscal year, we're using that for its intended purpose to help supplement our budget, but we do need to look at more long-term revenue funding streams for the city to continue to balance our budget with the rising costs that will continue to incur. So, there's something to put out there for council to start looking at as we head into the next fiscal year, and that is all I have for the Finance Department.
Okay, so then, the last section will be just to review the ARPA projects quickly. Looks like we do maybe have two numbering systems, so I'm going to say packet page 107 and 108, and I will pull up just the spreadsheet associated with that, maybe make that, if I can. Hope, once you pull it up, you cannot make it smaller. That is not an option for you. Or move it. Well, I can move it, so that's good. We'll start there. So, just to review your ARPA list started, we had about, almost 4.5, 4.49 million that came in rescue plan stimulus dollars to the city. We set aside money for the Kuna contract with Valley West that will continue in its second year this next fiscal year. We have the refund of some of the frozen staff positions. Some of those were funded in this current fiscal year, and some of those will be continuing to the next fiscal year. On Section 3 was Arcata Economic Recovery. We have identified several activities within that. You had set aside $200,000. We have allocated in this budget about $140,000 of that, you'll see, out of that $200,000. And so, we also did add and replace street trees on the west side of the plaza as part of that at $50,000. But you do still have, in that activity, you do still have, well, there is sort of $60,000 extra in there if you need it tonight. The Mobile Intervention Services Team and the extra support within, supervision within the Police Department to support homeless services and outreach are still in our budget this year. The Community Ambassador Program, the Safe Parking Program. We've completed any of the payouts for, in essence, a hazard pay for essential staff during the pandemic. In the, in the current fiscal year that we're in, our council chamber IT upgrades are all done. And then, you had set aside $500,000 for climate change adaptation measures. So, we've included the ones that we've talked about in previous meetings, facility upgrades within mostly the community center facility is the primary one that we're looking at and moving towards more electric and less gas. We have set aside $20,000 to help implement the all-electric initiative, $45,000 to support the goals of the CAP and the CAP Coordinator Position, which would be a regional position. And then, within the budget, in essence, in trying to balance, there were several activities or kind of projects that I thought would fit under that $500,000. Bike lockers and bike racks, both here at City Hall and throughout town, exchange of heater at Redwood Park Lounge, battery backup and equipment support, and then an energy analysis for decarbonization of some of our facilities as well, some monies in there. So, I included those projects within that $500,000 to kind of round out that $500,000 for your climate change adaptation measures. And then, we did have six other potential projects within the budget to try to help a balance that we're suggesting that we use ARPA funds for, and that is a replacement of Redwood Park Lodge, the roof, $225,000 as partial support for the radio system, $350,000 towards our paving projects this year, a set aside of $120,000 for the South Eye Street boat launch. You'll recall that just last Wednesday, you rejected bids on this project. We only received one bid when we took this out to bid, and it was higher than engineers' estimates. We are going to rework that. We will rebid that project, and we will try to bring it closer to within the budget that we have. But just to complete the base dock project, we needed an extra $120,000. So, to at least set that aside until we complete that rebidding project and process and see if we do need some additional funds to get that project over the finish line. I just sense that if we don't do this project now, that the costs are going to just skyrocket, and it will sit on the shelf for 10 years, you know, we just won't see it. We are so close to being over the finish line on that one. Every probably eight years or so, if we're on schedule, we do try to redo aerial imagery. We try to coordinate with the county and the city of Eureka. We use this as our base map for all of our GAS mapping, infrastructure, and project planning. And then, a set aside of $175,000 towards Redwood Park improvements. We do have a couple of grant sources to support that work, but just recognizing we're going to need some more discretionary funds to get that project really off the ground in the next year or two, you know, that we have the ARPA's funds for. So, with all of those projects funded, it leaves you, well, with, I'll say, $270,000, and in fact, there is an extra 60 in there, so you really have about $330,000, if I'm doing my math right. I'm making Eileen nerve, I'm making Emily nervous, she's like, "What?"
Just found an extra 10.
Oh, and Emily found an extra 10.
Just...
Oh, okay. Oh, because of the 50, yeah. Well, we're, so the 50 I counted twice, that's why. Yep, so we're good. Yeah, okay. So, we have 60 in addition to your 270, so you have $330,000 to work with. I did include all four requests that had come in over time for ARPA funds. You heard a substantial number of people talk about the Main Street request tonight, the Film Commissioner's request is in. I did do some outreach to the Film Commission, and I think tried to forward you some information. She was asking for an additional one-time allocation this year. The city of Eureka normally funds them at $25,000. They gave an additional $10,000 this year. We have normally funded at about $4,500, which is similar to what Fortuna funds. So, that just is kind of a placeholder for what other communities are doing. And then, there was a request that came in from the county around support of the childcare effort. I do believe that that grant and that project is sort of out the door, not to say that they wouldn't welcome additional funds for it, but they're not asking us a critical need right now associated with that project. There is one hand raised, although we're not in public comment, but just so you know in the attendees.
Can I say something? So, I think one of our council goals that we talked about was some strengthening tribal relationships with Wiat. I have been in some conversations with Jishkma, and I would like to request that we pull out an additional $10,000 for some projects that we might have in the works.
Yes, great idea. No, um, yeah, no, I agree with you, that sounds great. I would maybe like to, I don't know, specifically hear a little bit more about at least that program and what it would go to, but I'm really happy to support that.
Yeah, I think...
Housing Authority, right?
No, I think they're going to go through tribal council first and talk about it, and then maybe come back.
Yeah, and it's on a broader scale. So, one of the pieces that Council Member Matthews has met with the tribe on is we had worked with, actually, when Sofia Pereira was mayor, started to work with Ted Hernandez and the tribe around inland acknowledgement for the council to use. And so, she has met with them on that, and that's one piece that they'll be taking back to their tribal council to review on behalf of Arcata City Council. And then, I think that that conversation has just opened up. Are there other ways that we could partner as a government-to-government, you know, agencies and a council and electeds, and the council and electeds and the tribe over the course of this year? So, there may be, there are a couple of projects around signage and annotations around Wiat ancestral lands here in Arcata that I think have been loosely talked about, but I think more so, the request is to have a small set aside for all of you as government elected officials to be able to start to communicate and have something to work with as you develop that relationship this year. So, I think there's openness about what that would, those monies would be spent on.
Maybe should we talk about the Main Street request and kind of decide on what that number should be? And I, I mean, I think that I would prefer that most of the discussion come from you guys, since I'm the liaison, and I feel like I'm asking for my different projects for a lot of money in this budget, so I'd like to, you know, let you guys talk about it.
Um, yeah, I really want to support Main Street. Their proposal looks really good. Kind of at this time, though, with that third year being a little in flux, I would feel pretty comfortable giving them the $200,000, especially with kind of maybe a contingency that like a year from now, you know, they get the 100K this year, and then we have a check-in with them, see how they're meeting their goals, kind of evaluate that, and then, you know, give them that next $100,000 for the next year to continue that position kind of going on. Just to, you know, though it's not a new relationship that we have with Main Street, this monetary relationship is new, and just to kind of evaluate and check in with that, and just kind of seeing what money that we have left, you know, I think $200,000 would be a really generous and good place to start, and then kind of working in some of that extra money to maybe throw a little bit at the Film Commission, working with the Wiat tribe to continue that idea of signage and land acknowledgement, and to have a little bit of cushion room with some of that money left over to, I would actually, to go back and maybe add something to, to the climate change and adaptation measures. I don't know if there's any way that we could have some of the ARPA funding go towards CAP outreach or working on something involving the CAP. I know that we talked about it at the last meeting, just of wanting to see, gosh, that was in the CD, the block grants discussion, but if there is some way that could work with ARPA funding as well, it could alleviate some of that, and we could fund more product, projects with the community development block grants, so possibility there. But, yeah, 200K to Main Street, and I'm down to kind of work out the rest. I'm really happy that you brought up the Wiat tribe partnership as well, so.
Okay, just to clarify, we do have $45,000 in to support a coordinating position regionally to do outreach on the CAP. So, that is within that climate change. Yeah, and the hand raised, I think, is a representative from the pool, if that, if you want to take that comment or not.
Um, yeah, well, I was thinking, since it was, public comment was originally at the end of the agenda, and we moved it up, that we should, so let's just go ahead and pause for a second, and we'll do a second round if anybody's wanting to comment, comment on budget items.
All right, we'll start with online, and our first speaker will be Dave. Go ahead, Dave.
Let's see, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Okay, my name is Steve Nakmar, I'm the manager for the North Humboldt Recreation Park District, otherwise known as the Arcata Community Pool. The district is a special district that encompasses the city of Arcata, goes down as far as Indianola to the south, to the west Samoa, up to the Mad River, at least out toward on West End Road, does not include, go as far as Blue Lake. So, it gives you an idea of the area of the special district. I think our story over the last two years is very similar to what you heard with Main Street and all the other city departments, in that it has been a struggle over the last two years of the pandemic. We had two, I think, as many people, as many public agencies did, we had two lengthy complete closures, and what that did is, is something we're still recovering from. We estimate our revenue losses as well over $600,000, which is basically about three-quarters of an annual budget. funds that was used as paths through two special districts and other public entities. We did get $290,000 out of that fund about four or five months ago. What that did was get us at least partly out of the hole that was created by the pandemic. Probably not a lot of people know, but we were within literally an eyelash of not being able to make payroll or pay our bills. We, I mean, it was, it was always a day-to-day thing on whether, which bills we were going to pay at that time. So, we're, we're still trying to dig our way out of that. I think the Arcata Community Pool does offer some vital and unique services for the community, recreation programs, swim lessons for, particularly for our young people, family rec swims. We do interface with city of Arcata on their summer camps, and we interface tremendously with local schools for school group swim lessons, which we, learning to swim is a vital community service. The other thing that we're still struggling with is through those closures, we did really fall behind on staffing since we rely on part-time employees. A lot of those people have disappeared over the last two years, so we are still trying to build staffing to the level that we can get our programming up to where it was before the pandemic. We don't have a specific request because we're, I mean, we're, again, we're so far in the hole, we can't, we're barely, I think we might have an eyelash out of the hole to be able to see the horizon, but that's about all we've got. So, and I just wanted to focus you on the letter that we might, that we sent a number of months ago, just so that you know that it's there, and also to answer any questions or take any comments on our proposal since it was on the agenda.
Thank you for that. Okay, there's no other online public comment. Thoughts?
You want to talk about the Film Commission?
Sure.
City manager, can you give us those numbers again that you said that, how we allocate the payments to the Film Commission already compared to like Eureka and whatnot?
Sure. So, it looks like the county gives about 140,000. The city of Eureka typically gives 25,000, and they did an additional one-time payment of 10,000 this year. Fortuna's money actually runs through their Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if the city is involved in it or not, but it was $4,500 last year and anticipated that to be this year. This year in our budget was just over $4,500 as well. And then, it looks like they're anticipating a little bit of funds from the T-bid, it's called. It's an extra 2% that hoteliers charge in addition to the bed tax that comes to the cities, and so they do granting opportunities, and it looks like they have about a $60,000 one-time from that group that will be funding them this year as well.
Yeah, and I think I remember reading that the Film Commission is going to bring several really large projects to Humboldt, and I believe the last time they were here filming that one movie that was filmed pretty much all in Humboldt, it brought millions of dollars of revenue here. So, I'm totally in support of if it's 4,500, that is our usual give, I would support that.
Okay, and I think that they're hoping for more like a one-time fund out of the ARPA. I think that was the request, because we've been giving them like a little over 45, so if we have any extra to give. I do know, I can't remember all of the numbers and stuff that, you know, the Film Commissioner presented at our, when she did, but I know like for that film you were talking about, The Sky Is Everywhere, I think we benefited $300,000 just from the hotel stays in Arcata. That was just from that one thing, so. So, they do bring in direct money to our community, and.
Like two 45.
So, is there already a 45 in the budget?
Yes, we do already have their regular 4,500 is budgeted. Yeah.
I agree on that. That sounds.
Sounds good.
I'd have to do some math almost here to see where we're sitting, but.
So, so far from my notes, I have 200,000 to Main Street, additional 4,500 to the Film Commission, and then we said 10,000 for Wiat, and, and so then that would just bring us to, if we want to have a consideration for the pool.
Where are we at?
59,795.
That's what we have left?
Minus 4,500.
We're not allowed to have calculators up here, I guess. We just have to.
I think you have 115,000 left, is what I think you have.
What I have so far is that we've, 255 that we've spent with those three things, so. 255.
I rounded up, so 214.5, but where are you getting the 255? What's my extra five?
Oh, sorry, sorry, Film Commissioner. I was trying to give you 45,000.
Just for context, we used to, when we had the redevelopment agency, we were funding them at about that annually, so.
That's what they call the good old days.
Yeah, I'm not sure about, I mean, I, they didn't really ask for a number, so I don't even.
We have a recommendation, Karen?
Yeah, thank you.
My recommendation, I mean, I would be happy to reach out and talk with the pool about, you know, what would be a helpful number for them. You know, you're, it's okay for you to hold a little bit of this money still over if something else comes up. I mean, obviously, we've whittled a long ways of that, but as you go through that fiscal year, you know, if you wanted to set aside 25,000 towards the pool right now, and I could talk with them about, you know, if that would be a valuable contribution to them, I would be happy to do so.
Would that leave us with anything? That would leave us with a little bit. I'd like to have just a little bit left to, in case anything comes up later.
Yeah, I think it would be great, city manager, if you could talk to the pool, and then maybe when we come back to this, have a good recommendation.
Yeah, I can bring something back on the 22nd. At the 25,000, that would leave you 90,000 left.
It's going to be really sad that all the ARPA money is gone.
Which brings up a really good point that I think finance, that Andrea brought up, is that we're really going to need to, this year, kind of find a funding source to continue some of these awesome programs that we've been doing. So, we've got to work that out for us.
So, would you like a motion? Not yet? Nope, just any other direction that you'd want to provide tonight? I think I've got, I mean, if you're comfortable with what we've talked about, then we will prep a budget action for you on the 22nd, and certainly you can make, you know, modifications to it that night as well, but we will prep based on what we've heard tonight and any other direction you want to give.
Do we, anyone have anything further to add?
Just to thank everybody for all that you do. Honestly, thank you.
Okay, with that, we're adjourned.
You said high level eight times.